All right, we ready to start? All right, calling to order the regular meeting of the Bloomfield School's Board of Education. President Van Gemert is not here today, so I'll be chairing the meeting on his behalf. So trustee Madeluk, could we have attendance, please?
Yes, board members are present, excepting Mr. Cullen and Mr. Van Gemert.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, please, if you could all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just say that you know that there are a lot of teachers here when everybody says the pledge out loud.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Pat, do we have any public comment today?
I can tell there is no public comment.
Thanks to all the teachers we have in attendance today. Thanks for coming. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, trustee Kumar. A couple of things to update everyone on one, summer learning. We are halfway through summer learning. It seems like summer just started, so to say we're halfway through is kind of ominous, but we are halfway through. We have 255 K through eight students, and this year is the first time we're actually hosting them at the high school. So it gives opportunity for all the young students to see the amenities that they're going to have, get used to the high school, and be comfortable in that environment. Teachers have been doing an amazing job facilitating practical-based interactive activities. Learn One class is taking what they learned in the fourth grade economics unit and applying it to their classroom business, which is a water park where the students work together to plan for its operations with the resources provided to them, including how to find staffing, which I'll talk to a little bit at the end of my update. Had the opportunity to visit, like I said, today, lots of smiling faces, especially from the younger students, lots of questions to me. How tall are you? What is your job? Are you the president of the United States? Do you work here? Are you so-and-so's dad? So always those real intriguing questions, but it was great to see, you know, just all the youngsters interacting, whether they were in the middle of a lesson or transition between classes or outside for recess to play capture the flag and have a great time. Concludes on August 11th, which will end as a theme week for the students. Nick Riggs is our summer school principal, doing a great job, as well as all of our instructional staff. Millage. Tuesday, residents will be asked to vote on a critical proposal to restore the non-homestead operating millage for Bloomfield Hills School District. The requested renewal is not a new tax or increase. This restoration would keep the current rate of 18 mils for non-homestead properties. Also of importance in this millage, it excludes principal residency property. It is for non-homestead properties only. Non-homestead property includes businesses, rental property, industrial, commercial, and second homes. The state assumes each district is collecting eight mils from its non-homestead properties to determine the state portion of the per pupil funding. Without the full 18 mils, the district cannot collect the full amount for each student. To learn more about the millage restoration on the ballot, you can visit www.bloomfield.org/millage or contact me. I've had parents that reached out to me just for clarification and more information. Construction. If you've visited, and I know some of the board members visited North Hills, there's a lot going on with construction right now. Everything is still on time, still on budget. Very fortunate that the board was so supportive early on in the bond and allowing the money to be spent in kind of capture the costs where they were. That has proved to be very, very beneficial. We'll see how that continues to play out, but because you approved those funds to be allocated so early, we were able to purchase the items at a much lower rate than what we're seeing everything go for right now. So if you get a chance, feel free to stop by, take a peek at Coenit. You won't recognize it really even as a building, a lot going on, or South Hills, or any of the construction projects that were going on. PTOC Welcome Back Event. So mark your calendars for August 25th, 2022. Starts at 4:00 p.m. Last year was the first year that the PTOC put this together. We want to make it an annual event. The goal is to bring everyone back in the community before the beginning of the school year, kind of a way to celebrate the end of the summer and getting back in the, you know, kind of getting back into school. There'll be all kinds of different things for students to do, different ages. There's a semi truck that's actually a video game truck that will be on site. We have the animals from the farm, you know, face painting and other things. Followed by, it'll be the first football game of the season for Bloomfield Hills Blackhawks. Last year, they had a great season, went undefeated, were league champs, and then went on to the playoffs. So that will be there. Also, like everyone around us and everyone in the United States, we are hiring. We are hiring full-time, we are hiring part-time, and we are hiring anytime. So feel free to take a look at bloomfield.org/careers, check daily. If there's anybody that's interested in one of the positions and they have questions, feel free to reach out directly to me. More than happy to explain the position, give people more details, provide any assistance they need, whether it's walking through the application process, which is online. Happy to accommodate anyone that's interested in any of the positions. A lot of the positions that are part-time or anytime would be really great for our members of our community that are retired, that are looking for something to do three days a week, maybe two days a week, to be around young people that are just absolutely incredible and remarkable. And so we'll be kind of reaching out to that group as well to see if there's some interest there. But we definitely have some positions we'd like to fill before the start of the school year, so please, 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 take a look at that. And again, reach out to me if there's any questions about anything to do with the application process for any position we have open. And that's about it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pat.
Yes, sir.
So some of our school buildings are used as polling places next Tuesday.
Correct.
Does the construction impact any of those polling places?
So Coenit, instead of using the gym, we're going to use the fine arts wing, but the polling, you know, facilities will, you know, the schools will still be used. So, you know, plan was made today to make sure that, you know, everything needs to be, you know, done in certain ways, taken care of. So no, whatever your polling place is, feel free to show up. It might be a different entrance than you're used to and a different part of the building, but, you know, our partnership with the township is really important, and so, you know...
And there'll be signage, I'm sure, too.
Correct. And so you had team members today working on that and yesterday to make sure everything's done the way it needs to be, so our community can come on and vote, and we expect a big turnout as usual.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions about anything else in the update?
Will there be a dunk tank at the Welcome Back Day?
My understanding is...
Are you volunteering?
I did it last year.
Okay.
My understanding is yes.
Okay.
And that was, you know, like you, having been in the dunk tank when it was that hot was nice.
It was fun.
And we also have additional shirts, Bloomfield Strong shirts this year that are really nice. Board members will receive those to help promote coming up at our next study session on August 11th. But we're looking forward to giving those out in another giveaway to, you know, students and parents that will be in attendance at the football game later on. So it should be a great event, great evening.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Next, we have consent agenda.
So before I list the consent agenda, I just wanted to say to the community a huge thank you for every voting precinct in this community passing our bond in 2020. We were just in the North Hills Middle School site. It is very exciting. You know, it's one thing to see pictures and discussions, it's another thing to walk through and be looking at all of these wonderful spaces where our children will be learning for years to come. So thank you very much to the community, and please vote yes for the renewal non-homestead millage on Tuesday.
And that'll all start in September of '23.
September of '23.
In a year from now.
Yep, we're a year out. Okay, consent agenda. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes from the regular meeting and closed session of June 23rd, 2022. Request to approve minutes from the study session and closed session of July 21st, 2022. Request to approve dispersment reports submitted by Tina Kostick, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the dispersment reports as presented. Request to approve HR actions submitted by Keith McDonald, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Title IX Coordinator. I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have item 5A, Board Business. Request to approve purchase of furniture for the IA Okma campus.
Vicky did not cue the music.
So this particular agenda topic, I know we've touched on it at a couple of the committee of the whole meetings, and there is a lot of detail in the board package for this evening. So we're here to answer any questions. As indicated in the recommendation, we are looking for the board to approve the purchase of about $754,000 of furnishings for the Okma campus of the International Academy.
Any questions? Howard?
It's not really questions, just a comment. It is so wonderful that our district is finally stepping up and helping the IA in its facilities, both in the building itself and the furnishings. You know, in case anyone doesn't remember, that building was an elementary school originally and has been a world-class high school for the IA International Academy for 20-odd years. But it's a little long in the tooth, let's put it that way. And therefore, the work that we did last summer, in summer 2001, really helped to, the students and the administration and teachers were very thankful for the upgrades we did to the building itself. And then this, where we're actually going and putting investments into the furniture to make it 21st century capable, is really wonderful. So thank you so much.
I just have one question. I can't remember if we had discussed the furniture that we were, are removing. Are we donating any of the furniture that is of, you know, in good quality standing, a good standard?
Yes.
Reusable?
Yeah, to the answer the question, no, most of it will be disposed, most of it is not in good quality and shape. The pieces that are, will be reused in the building, but the vast majority of that stuff will be disposed of properly.
Michelle, most of the current furniture was garnered by former principal Chris Smith as throwaways from Birmingham and other school districts, catch as catch can. So...
They bought a sled desk if you'd like one.
Yeah.
And it's really beautiful.
So basically, they were hand-me-downs to become...
Correct, correct. And thank you. As a parent of a just newly minted graduate, I will say the students and staff are so wonderful, but there are certain physical discomforts in that building, not just furniture, and it's really great to move forward on that. Thank you.
I just had a thought, I just, when Jennifer mentioned it. Is this impacting any of the lab equipment? Is there needs on the lab side?
Yeah, so based on stakeholder review and some of those pieces, some of those will be replaced, some of it will not be. So there is, just depending on what was, still had good life or useful. So just in general, most of it was replaced, but some remained. And then all those classrooms will have new furniture, and some of those offices, like the teacher club space, if you've ever been in there, you know what that kind of puzzle piece looked like. That will be a full, new, modern feel in there that will make smiles happen, so we're excited about that alone.
David, I had a question on the actual implementation, delivery and installation. Is that's planned over the winter break? Is that right?
That is the current plan.
And we don't expect it to impact school restart after the break?
We don't think so. So typically, you're going to have probably a handful of days, and some of that furniture could be staged ahead of time prior to come on site. So let's say we got squeezed a little bit in there for some reason. We think we have some good confidence that if all of the supply chain's right and it's delivered, we'll be in good shape.
Okay, thank you.
Now, there's no real risk that we're seeing right now, let's put it that way.
Furniture does not have chips in it, so therefore...
Yeah, we got a better shot at it, so, yeah.
No questions? All right, if there's no other questions, move for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lisa?
Oh, wait, we have to read the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, jumped ahead. So can you make a motion somewhere?
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of furniture per consortium contract bid pricing for the International Academy Okma campus for a total cost not to exceed $754,355 funded from the Capital Improvement Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 5B, request to award bid 1040 for the IA Okma paving project.
So in my 16 months here, I've gotten a lot of complaints about the major pothole on the west approach of IA. It turns out, a couple of years ago, they did the sidewalk enhancement through there, and they put the east approach in. I guess they just did it, and nobody ever took care of the west approach. So we keep throwing asphalt cold patch in there, but we're losing the battle. So we went out to bid. Nagel was our lowest bidder, and once this is approved, they're going to start in the next week getting this taken care of, so we don't bottom out and lose cars in the potholes anymore.
When I do this, I move the Board of Education bid, award bid 1040, IA Okma paving project to Nagel Paving Company in lump sum bid of $43,290 to be funded with sinking fund.
Second.
Now discussion.
Any discussion?
I have no discussion, just a request. I think I've said it in study sessions before. I don't know if we own the tree line on the east side of the building, but it would be, it would be such a safety improvement to pave that out, to make it a 360 parking lot around that building. That, it's dangerous, and, you know, driving there twice a day for two years, like, you're just waiting for something to happen with kids and cars and brand-new drivers flying all over the place twice a day.
We have, we've attempted to do a lot of tree work on that site this year. You'll notice a lot of trees have been trimmed up. We took care of the, in the parking lot, all the way in the back edge there, on the west edge, we took, we cut back all those trees to get the parking lot lights a little more visible in there and try to enhance a couple of the safety features. And I think years to come, working with Spalding Adecker and the team, we can look at a site improvement like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Move to a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5C, request to adopt pre-calculus and honors pre-calculus resources. You have Sarah Fairman?
Good evening. I have three things up here today, so you can see me a bit. The first is pre-calculus and honors pre-calculus. This is generally a 11th grade course in terms of, if you talk with algebra, sorry, 11th or 12th grade course. Current state, we have, we've been using Big Ideas through Syngage. This is grades nine or six through 12. So what we're trying to do is really align our curriculum as we go all the way through from sixth through 12th grade in terms of concepts and also our resources as well. So we use Big Ideas in Algebra I in 2018, and we adopted also Big Ideas for grades six through eight, Geometry and Algebra II. So basically, pre-calc is at this point in that stream of classes, the last one that has not yet taken on a new curriculum and/or, or not new curriculum, but new resources. So looking at the resources for pre-calculus and honors pre-calculus, so this affects both of those courses. They looked at two resources, one from Savas and the other from Syngage, which is Larson, which is what is used in six through 10 essentially. All pre-calculus teachers looked the same two resources, either teach Algebra II or calculus, so they also had understanding of where the students were going and where the students had come from in terms of what they had seen in terms of Algebra II specifically, and then what they were going to see in calculus, and they wanted to make sure that bridge was coherent. And they received training on the resources, and then they went through the online platform. Most resources these days, compared to the old textbooks, are now digital resources, and so they were able to engage with those. Those give us some amazing tools in terms of question banks, in terms of additional resources for tutoring for students online at home, additional support, so that's a lovely part of these new online resources. They had, the students had access to an online textbook and the assessment platform, assignment platform, and some sample problems that they could do. They did not use the video resources because they have pre-calculus teachers who are amazing and also who produce their own high-quality videos, but those are also a resource that is available through Syngage. It's amazing difference between operating a textbook and getting an online resource. So with the pilot of both of those programs, we've got both student and teacher feedback, pretty much overwhelmingly, the Syngage was, online component was much easier to navigate than Savas. That's nothing new and different. We've had problems before, all the way down into, I believe it's second grade that was using, look at them all smiling, uh-huh. Yeah, that was also a, was not, the online component for Savas wasn't as strong. The feedback about the Syngage example problem button, they loved that, that if there was a problem, you got actually immediate and very quick response and support from Syngage that instead of sending an email and saying, "We'll get back to you in 48 hours," it usually was within less than four hours that they fixed the issue. And some problems were frustrating because students knew the answer but didn't know how to provide the solution. That's a very common online situation, which is, how do I prove my answer where I'm used to writing it and writing it all out when they're trying to use it online? We would not always use these online platforms as our assessment models, but more as practice models for students at home, so that's a little bit different. Teacher feedback, same content was covered by both. A more flexible platform is what Syngage offered with different styles of math questions, fill-in-the-blank, those types of things instead of one type only, and more options for students. And also, the Savas online platform is very disorganized. I think there's some people here who would agree with that, specifically any experience they've had with that platform. So they have gone with the Syngage as their option. We would ask for 225 digital access licenses. We would not purchase licenses for extension classes. Those are, we have an Algebra or pre-calculus extension course that would basically not be, they'd be using these problems, but that's much more of practice, conversations, structured support, and also targeted support in those classes. We have five teacher accounts, and then for those who still like textbooks, we would purchase 25 textbooks that would be available to students for a total price of $41,435.63. In my time as an educator, the fact that we can approve this today or tonight, I can order it tomorrow, and we will have the license by an hour later is amazing compared to textbooks before, where it would be a six-to-eight month wait for that textbook to arrive. So Emily Handy is just waiting for my call tonight if this is approved. So that is the first thing of the pre-calculus and honors pre-calculus resource purchase.
I remember a few years ago, or number, I think it was 2018 or so, where Harleen was doing all the work for the math curriculum, and it seems that, you know, every few years we then do another grade level in terms of upgrading it. And a lot of these curriculums, I seem to remember, were sort of homegrown and not necessarily established things, and they sort of evolved. Are we at the end of that line now of actually going through and getting everything so that they actually have a formalized curriculum? And then obviously, as time goes by, you know, curriculum change and you need to upgrade it, but are we out of the sort of trying to fix things in the first place?
Well, I think there's two things. The curriculum has always been a formal curriculum. It is, the resources we use were all the ones that were all over the place. So that hasn't changed. That's, that's part of it, though, but there is, but even with the resources...
Maybe I used the wrong term, resources.
Yeah, so the resources, this is pre-calculus honors, so this would technically be like a 12th grade course. So now we're at six, 12. This is the, if you're in the standard level. Then there's calculus, AP calculus, BC calculus. Though AB and BC calculus and AP stats already have their new textbooks, and they always have to align because they are in that circular rotation of AP, which evaluates every five to seven years, their curriculum. So every time that happens, we get the new resources. Calculus would be the next one, but I believe calculus already has done a purchase, and if not, it's not as big a class because most kids actually go into AP or BC calc. So this would be the end of line, six, 12.
Okay, and, sorry, so K, K5?
K5 is, yeah, that's a different alignment. So generally, what you see with the elementary resources versus the middle school resources is elementary resources include all strings of mathematics. Six, eight do too as well. Once you start hitting algebra, you become content-specific, right? That string-specific. So by using Big Ideas six, eight, and then taking on the Larson's engage, which is the same as that, but it's showing it in the same type of format, same language, same cadence, but, you know, obviously with a different context.
The reason I bring it up, from a board level, we really don't know when these things are coming up. All of a sudden, it shows up on an agenda that we want to...
Because we get really excited about math textbooks, right? No, this is exactly, this is...
So what I'm trying to decide is, and what I had asked five or six years ago, is, is there like a matrix of when these things are going to be coming up, whether it's math or science or English or social studies or ELA, so that we can sort of, as a board, anticipate, okay, over the next year, we're going to be seeing this set of resources come to us.
Correct. That, I know that you've asked for before. I think there's two answers to that question. Yes, we can get that to you, but the one thing we always have to keep in mind is that the department is also changing. The Michigan Department of Ed also changes the standards, so as those change, we change. So...
It isn't in stone, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, so in terms of mathematics, aside from possibly calculus, we should be done. We have done the K, this is now, this is kind of like the little cherry on the top of our sundae of mathematics resource purchases, and they are aligned horizontally and vertically, which we are very excited about.
And NGSS, I think we've already done a lot of that about years ago.
And what's really nice about, especially these online things, is you can go in and you can, let's say, three years from now, there's a random unit gets thrown in, you can, that unit just gets put into the online platform, and then you can just download it versus having to buy a whole new textbook. You can just buy that supplement. I know, isn't it crazy? So that is, that's the joy of it. So as things change, these online digital platforms allow us a lot more flexibility in meeting the needs of what is required of us.
Not only the resources update electronically, but also you can have hot links and videos and other types of things like that.
And we can also differentiate with it. Yeah.
Thank you.
So thank you for including the end users in on this process, the students and the teachers. My question is relating to the access licensing. So once we pay for the 225 licenses, does that, is that a reoccurring cost? Or is it a, you can reuse those licenses, reuse them? How does that work?
So you, basically, it's like buying the textbook. We have 225, and then we have a five-year, you know, is it a five-year contract with them? So it's 225 for five years, so that's a one-time purchase of that. But the idea is that we try to buy enough licenses that we don't have to add more next year, the year after. So we're anticipating what our enrollment and our courses are going to be. So 225 meets that goal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Question, John? I don't have any questions. Lisa?
No, I don't have.
Do you have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the recommended pre-calculus and honors pre-calculus textbook adoption as presented in accordance with Board Policy 3004.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. For a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes 5-0. Next item, again...
I'll let Emily know in two minutes, she'll be very excited.
All right, next item again, Sarah, item 5D, request to approve high school IB psychology and Algebra II prep courses.
Correct. So in our evaluation with students and speaking with their needs and wants at the high school, there have been two courses that we have determined, and this actually goes back to Howard's questions a little bit, that would be beneficial and/or wanted and needed by our students at the high school. So the first one is IB psychology. I know Jennifer is aware of this, but many of you also are as well, that to be a full I diploma student, you need to have six courses, one in Group 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Group 3 is the Humanities, Individuals, and Societies section. Currently, in that course, we only offer World Religions, which is an SL course only, and we also offer History, which is HL. IB psychology allows us to offer that at HL level, so it's a two-year course of study, but it also allows students not only to get college credit, but allows them to fulfill the one of three HL requirements for a full diploma student.
Was HL, SL?
HL is, oh, that's right, I forgot.
Edge, just speak.
I'm back in my IA days. So... So, the way that the IB curriculum works is that they want the students to be well-rounded, but they also want to make sure that they have areas of expertise versus areas of just excellence. So let's look at it that way. So if excellence would be an SL level course, it's called standard level, it's a misnomer in my opinion, it is not standard, it's actually AP equivalent, or freshman year equivalent or above. Higher level is considered equivalent to a high AP-type course and/or second or third year course in a, in a college. So to, if you are a well-rounded student, it is unfair to ask students to do six courses at the higher level that is not, for all the reasons that we know, an inappropriate request of students. So IB does this as an SL. You take three of them are SL level, standard level, which could be a one-year course, and then three of them are HL level, which is a two-year course of study. And that's the breadth and depth, because you think about it as a two-year course of study. So what was happening, or not happening, but our students who are in IB specifically requested that they are very interested in psychology, but taking AP Psychology actually kind of almost sidetracks them from being a full diploma student because it doesn't fit into the schedule, and it also doesn't allow them to have the HL that they're required. So we have a teacher and students who came with us with a proposal that they would love to offer this IB Psychology course. This is one of actually the more popular courses within the IB curriculum itself. We just happen to not offer it at the high school, and so this is the request to offer that.
I don't think we offer it at IA either.
Correct. Yep. It's, yes, we don't. I believe they're looking at it at the IA as well. I don't want to speak out of turn, but I know that that's always been a conversation. For the seven years that I was there, it was always a request as well. So this is a chance for us to offer that course. What is different about this versus AP is that it looks at the biological, the cognitive, and the sociocultural approaches of psychology, whereas the AP is much more of the biological, cognitive. It doesn't bring in that sociocultural approach. Sociocultural approach is very IB-esque. It's how do you interact with the world? It's bringing that psychology into that, into that realm. So, this is an alternative to AP Psychology. Students who are not full IB students are welcome to take this course, just understand that it's a two-year course of study. So, that's the first course. Any questions about psychology before I move on?
Do we have a teacher who's certified to teach it?
Kathleen Small.
Pardon?
Kathleen Small.
Okay.
Yep. And she's going to training like tomorrow, I think.
Until you mentioned it, I had never thought about this before, but, so there are different classes or different courses taught in some cases between the IA and the BHHHS.
In terms of sharing?
Well, so what I'm thinking is if there, so you said this is going to be-
This is taught, this will be taught at the high school only, yeah.
But not at, at, not at IA?
IIA.
Are IA students allowed to take a bus and take the class?
Not at the moment, in the way that our governing structure is set up at the IA.
Hmm, okay. And what about the other way around? Can high school, can BHA students can't take IA classes?
Yeah, they, they, the way the, the way the contract, not contract, the consortium agreement is written, is that you are allowed to share them in terms of sports and extracurriculars. Core curriculum, you cannot.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I remember now. So it's a two-year commitment for the student, right?
Correct.
And so what happens if there is a course in that second year that a student wants to take, and that's in time conflict? Are they forgiven for that two-year period? How does that work?
So they are forgiven, the issue is they can't test in it. So that becomes the challenge, right? So, so when you become a full IB diploma student, you declare it at the end of your sophomore year, much before that actually, in the middle of the spring of your sophomore year, and then when they build the schedule, they build the schedule around those IB requests so that, to make sure that that doesn't end up happening to you. So if you're a full IB diploma student, six, seven of your eight sections are already full with IB classes. So the way that that's created, then, then there isn't the conflict. So most students-
So it's already mapped out to accommodate?
It's mapped out, okay. Yep, and so this would be what we do an analysis of, who's signing up for IB Psychology, and what other HL are they not signing up for, and we put them opposite each other. It's a giant logic puzzle.
Love it. Love it, so well thought out, appreciate that.
If we're really geeking out, I'll, I'll just say, share with you, Howard, that it's a minimum of three of the six have to be HL, but you can do more than that at the HL level.
You can do up to four.
And, and it's not a difference in the curriculum, it's a difference in the assessment. So the, in a history class, some students may end up SL and some may end up HL, but that's not a classroom experience, that's the assessment experience.
Actually, I'm going to correct you just a little bit, that's the IA experience?
Okay.
Because IA teaches every course as an HL/SL level, so the content is the same, but what they're tested on is different. At BHHHS, if it's an HL course, then it is different content than an SL course.
Oh, okay, thank you for sharing that.
Yep. Because our, because also difference, just because you're experiencing it, the IA does offer one-year courses, or the BHHHS offers one-year courses that are SLs, so that's like a World Religions, a Sports Exercise, and Health Sciences, where the IA, every junior and senior course except for one is a two-year course.
Yeah, the environment one, yeah.
So the, the final assessment is different, you're saying?
It is different if it's HL.
But then, all the way through the semester, are they, are the kids in, the requirements of papers?
Are you talking about the IA or talking about here?
IA.
IA, so what will happen, I'm going to give you a history example, is fall of senior year, declare if you're HL or SL in that course. About December-ish is when you start, I'm talking history specifically, is when you hit most of the end of your SL content, and then you go into three units of study that are HL-specific. So if you want, another way to look at this is SL is about 150 hours of instruction, and HL is 240. So December to March is the other 90 hours of instruction that an HL student gets. The SL students stay in the course, but they might be asked to do different things with that content in terms of applying it back and re-revisiting previous content mixed in with a new thing.
From the SL proportion, not-
And the other difference also is always remember IB is really based on skill development and your approaches to learning. Content just happens to be how you practice it. So what they'll say to an SL student is, "Hey, you're learning about Mao. In, in history, what we want you to do is to go in there and say, 'If Mao were here now, who would be most equivalent to him and what would his policies be?'" That's applying that knowledge in a new way, so what you're actually doing is practicing the skill, just with different content.
Sorry for going down the rabbit hole.
That's all right, I can talk that all day. That I'm good at.
Any questions, Lisa?
No.
So the next topic is algebra?
Okay.
Make the motion.
Well, no, no, no. There's another topic, algebra.
Okay, so the next one is a class we're super excited about, and this talks about so many things that the board has been saying to us over the last couple of years in terms of making more avenues, more avenues, more avenues for students to find courses of rigor. So Algebra II prep is not a remedial course, it's an accelerator course. It is designed for students who are currently taking geometry, which could be a 10th-grade student in geometry, or a 9th-grade student who is taking advanced math in geometry. What it does is it prepares them for Algebra II. What we're seeing at times is that, and I have a whole scenario sheet on the next page, but let's say an 8th grader really took a chance and took Algebra I in 8th grade, got a C. Previously, that student might be counseled into retaking Algebra as a 9th grader. Why, and so we've been looking at that, saying, "The student took a chance, took a risk. We want to keep that door open. So let's put them in geometry, see how they do in geometry," because, because Algebra and Geometry, as everyone who does math knows, are completely different ends of how you think about math. And let them be successful in that geometry class, let them go through it. Now they know how to do a high school class, they might be better suited for it, but the question is, do they still have the muscle to handle Algebra II? So instead of saying, "Nope, no, we're going to put the brakes on you, you took a risk, sorry, you're staying right here," instead we say, "Hey, take this Algebra II prep class. What it's going to do is help you remember, refresh what you learned in Algebra I, strengthen those things, so that when you go into Algebra II as a 10th grader or 11th grader, you're ready, prepared, and you're confident going in." So this is a class that's designed to really accelerate, not remediate Algebra, it's not Algebra I content, it's actually Algebra II content, it's almost like a preview of, of what's coming. So a little, obviously you can't do Algebra II without going over some Algebra I, but it's the idea of being an accelerator and a reinforcer of what you already know, and being like, "You got this, we're going to give you just a little extra boost to get into Algebra II and be successful in that space." Yep.
I, I like this idea. I think my, my question would be, the word prep, to me, does speak to more remediation, and so on a, on an application for college, if I'm looking at the course, I've got to explain that this is really not a remediated course. So you kind of see what I mean?
Yeah, I can see what you mean. So, I, I really appreciate that feedback, and so I think that's something that we can look at, since we haven't quite put these courses, the course is in, but doesn't mean it can't be renamed. I appreciate how that could be perceived.
Maybe pre-algebra II.
You could think about it, I'm sure you'll come up with a great, a better-
Well, the problem is that we have to be really careful, because there is a pre-algebra II course. So this is an elective versus a core content course. So that, that becomes the tricky game of, when you name courses, you have to be clear about, are you teaching core content, or are you teaching accelerated content? So-
Way out of my depth.
Yep, but I appreciate what you're saying. So, yes.
Not a solution today, but just-
Not a solution, but I, as I'm staring right at it, yes, I appreciate that. In my head, I know what it was, but right, if I'm looking at it a different way, right, exactly.
So this class is a separate credit, like-
It's a, it's a one semester credit.
So, spring of my 9th or 10th grade year, I'm going to be taking geometry in one block, and then this class in another block.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there concern about the students being able to fit that in their schedule?
We have two sections running, one each semester going into this year. So, is, you know, the challenge is, you can take this, but if you're also in Theater and Band Requires or something, I mean, you have your four core content, your ID classes, that's five, so there's three remaining that are open to students. Actually, I shouldn't say, there's two remaining open, because Language is one of them for the most part. So this could be one semester of those two additional electives that are part of your curriculum.
And my, my other question is, would this class be open to the small number of 8th graders who take geometry at the high school?
Whoa, let's look on the next slide, because she went through all these scenarios, and I want to see, I mean, Jennifer, to be honest, I'm sorry, trustee clerk, or Matt Low, I'm going to get there, it's been a long day already.
I mean, maybe that's something that hasn't been fleshed out yet.
I'm thinking, most students who are in 8th grade who are in geometry, actually 8th grade, well, they might be in geometry at the high school next year, starting in the new buildings. Geometry will be taught in the middle schools themselves, because we'll have the condense of enough students to be able to be there. So I would say, I don't think I've ever seen an 8th grade student who is in geometry who needs support getting ready for Honors Algebra II.
Fair point.
Right, and it doesn't mean they can't.
And don't they not go to Algebra II, sorry, they don't go to Algebra II?
They go to Honors Algebra II.
They go to Honors Algebra II anyways.
And students who want to go to Honors Algebra II are welcome to take this course, it might just be like a refresher for them, or like if they, you know, feel like they, there's all of that that's in there. So on, on the scenarios, provided that you are, you're a student who is a Math 8 in Algebra I, one of the things that we are talking about in terms of pathways on, we don't want the fact that you didn't take Algebra in 8th grade to prevent you from becoming a full IB student. So here, take this course, it prepares you to go into Honors Algebra II, which sets you on the train to be an IB math student. So this is a real accelerator, booster, and allows, listen, we all develop at different times and different levels, and maybe at the end of 7th grade that you were not ready for math, but all of a sudden, that year, you had that tremendous growth. This allows you to accelerate through that program and not be stuck on one path, or have to take a double math.
So would this class also, with the new math requirement that's coming up, would this course be something that could be in the second semester if I took, I want to call it economics, only because we had-
Are you talking about the Financial Literacy class?
Yes, Financial Literacy. So is it something that could be in the second semester or before with, if I'm taking Financial Literacy in my sophomore year?
Yes.
I can speak to that, too. We have to see what the standards are going to be with the class.
Okay.
And once we know that, we can figure out the best way to either have a standalone class incorporated into Econ or some other class, and kind of move forward that way. So as soon as we do that, we'll problem-solve around that. So our students have a couple of different options for meeting that requirement for graduation, since it's going to be new.
So by this being a one semester, since it's a one semester course, trying to make sure that there are other options for the student to take in the second semester?
Correct.
Couple with this course?
Yep, so we, it could be, I mean, they could take, we have, we have a couple of one semester electives, we have PE courses that are one semester electives, we have, I mean, you could go ahead and take Government, I suppose, if you want, and get that requirement out of your way. What we do like is having Algebra II prep in the school and not in the summer. I think some people would probably look at that, but the idea behind this is that it allows you to, to see where geometry is actually helping you through, and to identify those things as you, like the mesh of them going through, and it helps those students get ready for that.
And this class is only offered, it's a once, once taught by one person?
It's offered in both, both semesters, and it's offered to current students in geometry, which could be 9th or 10th graders.
And it doesn't, and this is just me, it doesn't interfere with like, if I were in band or anything?
So that's why we were saying, like, when you're in 10th grade, you have your four cores, you have your Language, and you have ID Hour. That's six of your eight, so you have two electives that are still out there open. So band could be one of them, there's still is only half of that last one left.
Just want to make sure they're still able to still do fine arts if they're, that's something they're interested in.
Yes, yes.
Keep in mind, unfortunately, there are oftentimes constraints, right? So if you're offering one section, and you're offering one section of something else, students will have to pick, right? "Oh, I really want an AP Physics C, and I really wanted to do, you know, AP Psych." Well, the two hours are often, are offered at the same hour, so sometimes they will have to pick when there's constraints.
Singleton are difficult, and that's what this would be considered as a singleton in the schedule. The one thing is, if we know that it's 9th and 10th graders taking it, then we would look at when a 9th and 10th grader most likely would be in an arts class, which is going to be the Black Hawk Band versus the Symphonic Band. Not every single time, but, you know, try to look, like, again, like we were talking about IB Psychology, is that you look at where the other opposing one is, and you offer them the same hour, so you don't have the conflict across. So this would be a course that would be offered, generally not when those students would be taking in arts.
I appreciate that.
Like I said, come over anytime if you want to look at schedule.
You will be surprised.
You too can be an AP.
You too, yeah, right.
Is this course kind of analogous to the 11th and 12th grade, oh, I have the word-
Extensions?
Yeah.
It's analogous in the sense that it, this is not teaching the same content that's being taught in the other class at the same time. So if you take Calculus Extension, you're taking Calculus, and then a Calculus Extension, which you get to go, we get to practice Calculus a bit more, get additional support with Calculus. This is, you're taking Geometry, this is giving you a preview of Algebra II content.
Okay, so it's not concurrent with, is the difference?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not concurrent with this, the difference, but it's also designed as a support.
Correct.
Assuming that they will, right.
It's a support boost versus a support with.
So if a student takes the prep course or whatever it will be called and then doesn't go on to algebra, have they covered content enough?
They have not covered enough core content to be considered. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
And algebra two is also a graduation requirement.
Correct.
So they, they are going to be taking algebra two.
Whenever, whatever year they take it, they will be taking algebra two.
And, and this course doesn't fulfill that requirement.
Correct.
Right, okay.
I mean, it's taking, as you would think, it's taking a little bit from, from algebra one and making sure that they're solid in that and then moving them directly, giving them that preview of algebra two. But it's not the full course content that's required.
Kind of like the talks, you know, we've been having since I've been here, how do we continue to try to meet the needs of individual students based on where they're at? Some students need a little more assistance, some students just need to move a little bit forward. And if we have students that are really trying to take that next level, they really want to move forward in math because they want to be an engineer or they just have a passion for math. What are we doing for those students? So if you get a chance, I'd recommend looking at the high school offerings. Our course catalog is incredibly extensive. Feel free to compare it to anywhere else. We're one of the few districts in Southeastern Michigan that offers a full IB program and a full AP program at the high school level.
So this is another example of equity in terms of not one size fits all.
And Sarah just made an excellent point that it's an, if you don't, right now, if you don't take algebra one as an eighth grader, you cannot become a DP student because you can't fit in the high school requirements in ninth and 10th grade. So this will be a huge step forward in being able to get more DP students at the high school.
And, and I think that it also allows us to address students where they are, as Pat had said, but I think it goes the same with reading. You know, there are times that reading is this amazing thing that all of a sudden it comes together. Sometimes that happens in kindergarten, sometimes it happens halfway through first grade, sometimes it happens a little bit later. Reading recovery is, is that place that catches you and says, hey, we're going to help you get this one last tool so you can just take off. Not saying that this is the same as reading recovery, but it's the idea of like giving you a boost to let you to get up to that level that you want to do. We would never want a student who took math eight because that's where they're comfortable, that's where they are, that was the best thing for them at the time, to have that have a five-year implication for them. This allows them to, I guess, catch up, it allows them to accelerate, it allows them to, to, like you said, all of a sudden you said, oh, yeah, I want to do it. Like I love the second bullet point up there about they took math eight, algebra one and geometry, they were right on the right path. That is, that is a perfectly fine path, but they decided, I really want honors algebra two, I want that challenge because I really want to go to AP calc. This allows them to do that and not say, well, because of the decision I made in eighth grade, I can't do that. Or not even, decision made for me sometimes in eighth grade, right?
Any other questions? All right, I move the board of education, approve the new high school courses, IB psychology and algebra two prep as presented in accordance with board policy 3003.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Oops, I went the wrong way.
Next item on the agenda, item 5E, request to approve updated graduation requirements.
So there are two graduation requirements that we are requesting to be changed. The first one is basically based upon law. So in June, Governor Whitmer signed House Bill number 5190 into law, which required a personal financial literacy class for students who are currently entering eighth grade in 2023, which strikingly enough means a graduating class of 2027. So while we are looking at graduation requirements, we wanted to put this on to our graduation requirements so that as those students come through next year, it's already on there. They can see it's going to be there. It's, you know, we could already tell them this is a class that you're going to take. Where the challenges where we currently lie is that the curriculum has not been released yet. So the state in the law said there's two, three ways that you can take this course. One is that financial literacy class could be a 0.5 math class. Right now, we do have personal finance as one of the courses at our high school. It's a full year course. It's generally taken in the senior year. This, because we don't know the content yet of this course, they are saying it's only a one semester course. So there's a potential that the first, if we realign our first semester of personal finance, that would fulfill that credit. And then the second semester of personal finance could be an, you know, extension of or acceleration of that information. But you do have to take math in your senior year. Again, we have students who go through calculus, they have AP IB, AP stats. So this would have to be kind of an elective math credit for them. A second one is providing a personal economics course that fulfills the economics requirement as well as the financial literacy requirement. We don't know anything about this course yet, other than they put it in the law, which is, I have a feeling that the law was written and they said, okay, MDE, now you go and figure out what this is. We don't know if that's a half-credit course or a full-credit course. We don't know if it fulfills both the economics requirement and the personal financial literacy requirement. Once that is released supposedly in August, we can take a look at that and then come back to the board when we have, that would be when we bring out the new courses and that idea. To say this is how we're going to meet these things. The third one is changing our own requirements here to allow the financial literacy class to be used in lieu of 0.5 visual arts or 0.5 world language. This decision cannot be made until the MDE releases the standards and requirements for the course. So this first request just states under the math, which is the second line across, that we, that personal financial literacy could be a 0.5 course of this 1.0 credit for senior year and also putting in there a little bit, about halfway down. The personal financial literacy is a requirement half semester for all students graduating beginning the class of 2027. That would be this part. It does not really change our overall total credits required.
So what exactly are you asking the board to approve today as far as this goes?
Just, I guess, when we get to the next thing is updating the update. So this is part one that's in the update and then part two would be, because I think as we had it written, it's both the advisory and. So this is just understating the first part of it.
Right, right.
Yep.
So let's have questions separate on this and the advisory. So let's hold our questions up.
So I have a question, Sarah. So I, so for your number two here, and I, I know we have, they have yet to announce it, but it is possible that we could have a one semester course that is both the personal finance requirement and the economics requirement?
If the MDE declares that to be a 0.5 class, the problem right now is economics is required, as required is the 0.5 class.
Right.
So in my head, I'm thinking this would become a one-credit class that are combined together. But I don't, but don't, this is kind of where the MDE gets to tell us what it is. Does that make sense? Because right now we have.
We don't get to, we're not deciding that, okay.
We have to see, is there any crossover with the personal finance class that somehow is either already in econ in the curriculum or can be embedded in? So we know it's going to be required for graduation because it's part of the Michigan Merritt curriculum, so it's going to be mandated. And it's a matter of how do we, again, provide opportunities for our students to meet that requirement that will meet their needs.
It would be nice, I'm just thinking, to have that as one thing because then the kids can take something, they have more room in their schedule to take other things.
I don't know if I'm reading too much into it, but I think that what we're being asked to do is to sort of swap out a 0.5 credit that was required from another area to leave room for this.
That's a potential we could do. Right now, right now, the swap that is up there is just, we took a 0.5 credit out of additional credits.
So that we still are requiring the same amount of credits for graduation, but we're giving ourselves flexibility, which doesn't mean they can't take it as an elective, but just accommodating for an additional 0.5 credit that will be mandated or maybe a one credit.
Well, if it's a one credit, it would combine econ, which is already required, 0.5 credit.
So we know the financial literacy is going to be a 0.5.
Yes.
So that makes sense to me then, how it's worded.
Yeah, so basically the only swap out that is on that from previous graduation requirements is that the additional credits, which is just below that, went from nine to 11.5 to 8.5 to, is that eight? I don't have my glasses.
And so Sarah, can you just reiterate, because I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding that, that we're still going to offer the same number of visual art and world languages. It's just the opportunity to graduate with the requisite number of credits and have some flexibility for the student in their schedule.
I think sometimes, anytime you add another class to what is already a very robust graduation requirement, I think there's a little bit of panic. So I wanted to be transparent. Those three bullets there are what the state says we can do to incorporate that 0.5 in there. One of the joys about being in Bluefield Hills High School is that we do have 28 required credits, 32 potential classes that are there. There are a lot of high schools around here. I'm not going to talk about Mr. Watson's previous high school, but they only have five classes. Adding this kind of requirement to a program that only has five classes or, or even six is a, is a huge shift change for them where we have a little bit more flexibility due to the way our schedule is created. So that's why one, two, and three apply to, to districts that have less flexibility than we do. But I just wanted to make sure it was out there so people could see this is how it could come out. But we're waiting for all of that curriculum to come out to see what works best for students because we might be able to offer two of those three options to our students.
So this likely won't even affect us.
Just that you have to take the class. Aside from taking the class, right, yeah, that's the impact is you have to take the class.
I mean, there will be impact if we remove advisory. So there's, there would be some impact.
What I'm saying is just on the, I'm talking about personal finances. Right now, we'll talk about advisory and just, yeah, that'll be the next slide. Yep.
So this is pretty much hot off the press out of Lansing because this was just approved last month.
Correct.
From the governor signing it. So you said MDE, I think, is on a timeline to give us the.
If you go on.
The standards by next month?
If you go on the website, they say they'll be released in August.
Okay. Okay, so if they release it, let's say in August, you, you know, central office will kind of absorb it, figure out all these different options and then come back to the board with another approval?
The, the emergency is not, I mean, not that this is emergency, this just came out, right, because this is five years out. So this is, this will be in place, the student, current students who are about to walk into the, to the doors in eighth grade this year are the ones who will be first required to have this course as a graduation credit. So we have some time to figure out how we want to make all of that work. But as we start to recruit and look at students and everything else, it's always nice to have your graduation credits be up to date.
So in terms of actual changing of the course manual, it will be for the 2023, 24 school year?
Yeah, so that's the other, so part of what we want to see is where does it fall? Because if it is a class that could be offered in the summer, we want to make sure that's optional for the students as they walk in before their freshman year. If it's a class that doesn't lend itself to that, so we want to see those standards and practices first before we say how, how it is that you can meet this requirement.
So basically, we would expect to see you back here again in.
Yeah, you'll play some immune years from now. Yeah, yeah, this is not as big a rush as it is getting it on the requirements. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about bullet three. Why would knowing the MDE standards for the personal finance course impact our decision as to whether we pull back?
That's why I was saying that that three doesn't impact us as much because we have so much flexibility in our schedule. If we only had five classes, there are high schools around here that only have five classes that are offered for a year, which means that their graduation requirements are, well, they'd have to have, it's 18, as the Michigan Merritt curriculum is 18. If you're only offering five classes a year, that means your kids only have 20 credits. That becomes a very tight way for them to fit that into the requirement. So for us, with a more robust graduation requirement with more robust course offerings, we will, I don't see three as being where we live.
So right now, we could pull back 0.5 visual arts or 0.5 language without getting in trouble with MDE. Is that, is that right?
We could. I would say, and I'll say this very clearly.
Not saying we want to, but yeah.
Well, to be competitive in the college market.
Yeah.
Where our world language stands at 2.0 credits is a place that we would want to stay as a district.
Yeah.
With our visual arts being at 1.0, also a place that we would want to stay.
No, I'm not saying it's, it's a desirable outcome, but it is, it is a possible outcome.
The joy of my job is that we have this lovely 32 classes that you take or 32 credits, whatever, that you take over your four years with us, that we have that flexibility. I do know counterparts of mine, when this came out, was a little concerning because it doesn't, you're taking away an elective, right? For, if you have only six classes or five classes a year, you're taking away an elective from those students into a requirement where we don't have that challenge as much. Yes, they have to take the class, but the impact is less than if we had fewer electives for students to take or space for students to take.
It's a better space, at least to me, and they were moving a requirement from the other areas. I would, I would not want for us to move our visual performing arts or our world language down 0.5. I think that would not.
Correct. I would, I would not.
Be feasible.
And again, we are in that lovely space where we are fully funded in that area. We have amazing teachers, we have all the facilities. I know that there are schools around our state who, who, that actually might be a place where they can have a reprieve. We are not in that spot and I would strongly recommend, I will stand before you and stomp my feet and say, we are not taking away those credits. You know me, yes.
Stomping your feet, okay, Sarah.
I was being transparent that that is in the law, so.
Given that MDE has not finalized the, the, the course material yet, is this something we need to finalize today or approve today?
You have to, regardless of what the credit, what the course is, the, the course has to be on your graduation requirements because it's part of the Michigan Merritt curriculum. So staying in line with what is required of us to always have a, have a graduation requirements that meet the Michigan Merritt curriculum. We are putting this out because as those kids come in next year, we wanted to say, yeah, we did change them all of a sudden. They are, this is where, this is what you have to accomplish if you want to graduate with us in 2027.
It's just a transparency thing, just so that kid know, gets noticed.
I also want an A and it came out and I wanted to be the first one. Also A. You should know me by now, right?
Honesty is important, Sarah. Honesty is important.
Any other questions on financial literacy?
Now, Pat made a comment about this could possibly, could you explain the one credit if it were to be coupled with economics? How, how did that, you said it short, so I wanted to make sure I understood.
What Sarah shared is a whole bunch of options and brainstorming that is taking place. Until we actually know what is going to be required.
Don't try to explain it to me if it's not something that's definite.
I don't know what the criteria is to give credit for the class yet, so no, I couldn't explain what it would look like. But once we know that, what are the different options we can do for our students? How can we make it feasible? Even at the end of the day, you know, when I talk to some of the high school students, especially this group of seniors, they didn't have room for all the classes they wanted to take.
Okay.
And they took a lot. You know, eight hours over four years. Some of them would have taken 12 hours if they could have. So as far as, well, this is required, so what is our plan as a district? What are the options for the students? What is it going to look like? What could it look like? And what are you recommending? All that will have to come once we know what the expectations to meet the standards are from the state. And then we can articulate some of the options for everyone.
And I think, Michelle, part of what I see into, because it's not really fleshed out, but because it was a house bill versus the MDE bill, right? Is I think that they were trying to offer some space where you could combine the required economics course with the required financial literacy into one course. What they, because the house bill can't do that, what they can't say is that it's a half-credit or a full-credit. So when I see personal economics, that's very different than what they actually have in the Merritt curriculum, which is economics. But, so that, that was the nuance that I saw, that that might be a place where they're trying to allow some space and flexibility into a schedule for a student, where you could bind those two together, hitting some, some powered standards in both of those sections and having it as a short, a one semester course versus right now, you have to take economics and you have to take personal finance. That takes a year.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, if there's no more questions, we can move on to the next topic, which is advisory.
Yes, so this is a request to remove advisory as a graduation requirement. I want to be very clear at the beginning, this is not removing student support. It's just removing advisory as a graduation requirement on our graduation requirement page. So currently, this is our current situation where we're in. Bye.
Bye.
Love you all. Virtual advisory in 2122 became an obstacle to graduation. Many students did not meet the course requirements for credit, even when the reduction to pass was reduced. It was getting very concerning. There are, and then we were, they were in jeopardy of not graduating because it's a graduation requirement that you have those full credits of advisory and they were not hitting that mark. The second part is the flexibility of a virtual advisory created supervision concerns, it created attendance problems. It created issues in people's accounting and record keeping challenges that included some funding implications for us in the end. The social emotional learning that was originally in the old advisory, I shouldn't say old advisory, but like the pre-2016, 2017, 2018 advisory is now embedded into our coursework as it is and into all the courses. And then the bigger thing for us, I think, is, you know, students spoke with their feet is the best way I can phrase this. Is that only 18% of the students actively participated in advisory on a weekly average, either online, virtually, or in person. And then 36% of all students on an average were tardy to the class after advisory, which means for students who stayed home or were not, you know, in person for advisory, that 36% of them were tardy for their next class that is after advisory, which is actually higher than our daily tardy rate. More importantly, and I think this is where a lot of people look at advisory in terms of support, it is a supportive place, but I would call it a passive supportive place. Students do not receive targeted and structured support in the current advisory program. They receive support, which means a student walks to a teacher and says, I need help with this problem, I need help understanding that. That in a way is passive. Yes, it's active on the student's part, but that doesn't mean every student who needs help is walking in. It's the ones who, it's passive support on our end. It's like we wait until someone comes and says they need help versus saying, I see that you're struggling, I'm going to give you help. That is how advisory currently is working, so that's our current situation. So when we are looking at next year, we also identify some additional concerns with advisory. Supervision is one. With students attending advisory both in person and virtually, the school is unable to identify which students are in the building in the case of an emergency. Engagement and tardiness, as we said before, and this year is the first time we really went virtual, that was not a COVID-based virtual year. 82% of our students did not actively engage in that course and/or come to the building. And 36% of our students were tardy even after a delayed start. This is a safety concern and also an academic concern as we noted above. Going into next year, if advisory remains as a graduation requirement, it will be an in-person only in the 2022, 23 school years for the reasons listed above. Additionally, there's an opportunity cost to advisory. Advisory plays to 36 hours over the course of a year. It's about, it's one hour a week, so 36 weeks times an hour per week is 36 hours. 36 hours is equivalent to six full days of instruction with six hours a day. Breaking that down even more, that means three full classes of each course in a student's schedule. We can add that back in. So for the eight courses you have, we could offer you three more classes, which is four and a half hours per class. By having students in their class with their teacher, all students have access to additional instructional support rather than the small number who actually attend advisory. We would call this active support. The additional time allows for individual, small group and back to whole group instruction opportunities and informal feedback on student progress. Again, the students are with the teacher that whole time, with the teacher, with all of their teachers, not just one teacher. And they're getting the feedback that they need for that specific course. So what we are looking for next, this year and beyond is embedded student instructional support. So the big proponents, the people who love advisory are because they have access to teachers, they can go ask questions. Again, it's a, not every child is doing that. So we wanted to find a way that we could be more equitable and reach our students and do targeted support or what we call active support versus passive support. So first things first, in our, they just all left me, but in our new contract, previous contracts had teachers that were seven hours and. contracts had teachers that were seven hours and 25 minutes as employees, but we did not say that they had to be on a campus for seven hours and 25 minutes. We only stated that they had to be on campus from bell to bell. So with our new contract that we just worked out for four years, teachers are to arrive at least 10 minutes prior to the start of the bell and stay at least five minutes after, so that's 15 additional minutes. And then addition, there's another 15 minutes to get us to 7:25. Our school day is six hours and 55 minutes. So those extra 15 minutes, either before or after school. So teachers would be there from up to 20 minutes after school or up to 25 minutes before school. And then that would be also accessible to students, so teachers won't be walking in and out with students. They'll actually be there, be able to provide support to the students. This is new with this contract that we just passed. Additional captured time in class, I love the word captured, but the students are with their teachers. They are there to receive that support. So with that equivalent of three full classes, we are not adding course content. It's the same course content, but we're adding three more days in which to help and support students kind of, I guess, move it around so that we can address our students where they are on the day that they're there and help them at that time. Students will have additional time in class with a teacher for their instructional support that is targeted and structured specifically for the student and the course in either individual, small group, and/or informal feedback sessions. This is what we would consider active supports. These are also considered tier-one supports, and at times tier-two supports, depending on how they're implemented. Opportunities for testing and retakes. While there are many people who enjoy advisory for that, the problem with it is that everything can happen on Wednesdays. You may or may not be ready on that Wednesday, or by the time that it comes around, you may have forgotten what you were supposed to take. You know, that there's all of that, I, you know, I guess, it's like testing on demand, right? So to kind of move that back and allow some flexibility for readiness, the high school staff today, we were just over there, they have worked to find ways to move some of the things out of the main office so that we have a testing center in the office for students to have the opportunity to create those testing and those retakes within the building itself, and not just having to do it on a Wednesday. And then lastly, again, looking at active supports for students, in the interdisciplinary hour, which is for ninth and 10th graders, students will be assessed three times a year with the FastBridge A reading and A math. The A reading and the A math provides targeted, well, it's skill-based. So we can see, oftentimes, if you're having a problem in science or in history, it also goes back to some issues you may have where you need some additional support in math and reading. So this allows us to provide targeted and structured support based upon those three FastBridge assessments and support the skill development of students. We call that active support. These were all things that we can add as we go into next year that we're looking at. And then lastly, we do have a learning strategies class. This is for general education students. It could be expanded as an elective opportunity, which basically means offering more sections of it with additional costs to districts. This course curriculum addresses, but not limited to what you see up there. Note-taking math skills, English language art skills, test-taking skills, approaches to learning, executive functioning, and specific course support, if possible, or when necessary, probably I should have said. So that is already something that is in our schedule that is available to students. We could always expand that as an elective opportunity to provide additional supports to students. So when we go back to what the actual request is, we are not saying we're taking away support. We are not saying that you can't go retake your tests. We're not saying you can't go see your teacher. What we're saying is, we want to remove this as a graduation requirement. It's becoming an obstacle for us as a school. It's becoming an obstacle to students for graduation, and due to what I would say on this page, the supervisory concerns and the engagement and tardiness, these are major issues as to, that we want to address, and we'd rather have you in front of a teacher and in class than in an advisory situation.
Questions, maybe we'll start with this side?
So that's a lot of information to.
I know, it's a lot.
If I can, you know, summarize my understanding, maybe you could.
Sure.
All right. So I'm old, and my kids have been here for a long time.
At least you and I are the same age, you're not old.
Okay. Well, I'm, I am a little old, but anyway. My kids, my oldest had a more traditional advisory. It was every, it was one of the courses every other day.
Correct.
And it was basically a study hall, but it was also an opportunity that you could go from teacher to teacher if you needed that. So my understanding is that that advisory ended, as we knew it, ended years ago because the state said, you, you have, you can't have a course during the school day that doesn't have certain curriculum requirements.
Correct, and assessments.
Instruction and assessments. All right. So for me, I could stand here and advocate for advisory. The advisory I would be advocating for.
That you remember, yes.
Would, would be, is already long gone.
Correct.
Okay. So the current advisory that we've had over the last couple of years looks different because of state requirements.
Well, it's meeting, it's not state requirements, it's instructional time requirements.
Instructional time requirements.
Yeah, so like, we're not teaching state content within advisory. What we are doing is addressing, we are addressing, actually, some of our state SEL was originally put into advisory. Now we have moved that into the classrooms. So we had a curriculum for that. We still have some of that embedded into the program. There is an assessment, this is, this is the problem we run into, is that there was an assessment every month for the students to pass that, and we were even having students having a hard time completing that.
Right, okay. So, and I, I misspoke, I should have said.
That's okay, it's a lot.
It's not a state curriculum, but it is a state requirement that you have a curriculum, and you can set the curriculum.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So it's already different from the advisory I remembered that.
Right.
It was really just a study hall.
Correct.
So, and then gathering what you told us at the study session, and then just now, I wasn't really the only one who sort of looked at advisory as a study hall, a chance to catch up, get homework done if you're super busy after school, talk to your teachers, because there were assessments that were taking place, and because of students not doing the assessments, and this being a graduation requirement, they were in danger of not graduating.
Correct. We, yes.
So we're eliminating this as a graduation requirement.
Correct.
Which doesn't mean we're eliminating what the new advisory had become. We may be tweaking it and improving it with more actual.
And placing it back in the classroom with the teacher that can actually help. I think one of the big challenges that, for advisory, is that when you are running an advisory class, let's say you have 10 kids who managed to show up that day in person, you've got three kids who are online asking you questions, and then you have someone from a random class that you have eighth hour come in and say, hey, can you help me with this one problem? That's a lot, that, so that's where we talked about, that that is not targeted and structured support, that is a passive support, which is, yeah, I can help you with that one problem, but hang on a second, I have to go deal with this, and I have to go deal with this and do with this. We're in the classroom, it is targeted and structured for all students in that space. And so I think, well, you talk about equity, when you talk about inclusive, when you talk about accessibility, which are three big words, the other thing that we ran into, which is not on here, is that if you are unable to get a ride independently, either by a car or by someone else driving you, you are still going on the early morning bus and getting there at 7:40 in the morning. So we would have students who were there at school, which is why I was talking about, it's a safety issue, where they, they would go and talk to their teacher, but then they're like, I'm gonna go check in with so-and-so, and then just.
Right. Which was always a concern.
Always a concern.
When we were, when, and so, you know, just to date myself again, that happened when we had the old-school advisory, and students could have late start on that day too.
Correct.
But same thing.
Correct.
It wasn't really equitable, because if you didn't have transportation, you couldn't do that. So we're recreating a problem we'd already eradicated years ago by this.
Right, exactly, right.
Okay. So it also sounds like what you're saying is, there are ways to, if you need to talk to a teacher one-on-one, ask questions, even if it's to schedule a longer time to meet with them.
Correct.
There's a better opportunity because they're in the building for an additional 15 minutes each day before and after school, so you can.
Well, there actually, it's a better, it's an additional 30 compared to the previous contract. We just know that 10 of it is before school by, we now are saying, we want our teachers in 10 minutes before the first bell and staying five minutes after, and then there's 15 more minutes that they have to tack on to either end.
Oh, all right.
So they're, they're there an additional 30 minutes per day.
All right. So if I'm worried about the opportunity to talk to a teacher one-on-one, if I don't understand instructions or I need more help, maybe it's not enough time to get more help, but it is enough time to schedule a time to get more help.
Correct.
And to get little, you know, quick questions answered.
And I think oftentimes, especially these days, there are, you could say, I don't understand this. A teacher could very easily say, I'm gonna help you through this, I want you to do these three things, come and see me tomorrow morning, because I will also be here, and we will see how you, how you did with that. So I think sometimes it's the idea of being able to know when I'm gonna see you again to be able to help you with this is a, is a really helpful thing. We are excited about the new cadence that that allows for us at all of our levels, actually, with that new teacher report time, because it allows teachers some flexibility in terms of how it works best for their own schedule, but also it allows us to say, hey, if a student needs to see you or a parent at the elementary level, you know the teacher's there, and you don't feel like, oh, I'm keeping them here. Like, nope, actually, we're keeping them here. We want them to be accessible to you.
Okay. So last question. If I, and I was, one of the parents who really did miss the old-school advisory. I liked, if my kids didn't have questions, that they had that downtime.
Sure.
Study hall, so to speak, because they are really busy. It was a great chance to do homework and kind of relax a little bit, but that's already been gone for years.
It's been gone, and I think that when, this kind of just goes into the larger history lesson, and I know Pat, the other fellow history person loves this too, but when instructional time became such a big deal with the Michigan Department of Education, this is when, and the Michigan Merrick curriculum came out, this is when that whole advisory, study hall, we, teacher aides. I mean, I loved being a teacher aide, that was one of my favorite.
Independent studies.
Independent studies, all of those things. I mean, we still have independent studies, but that has to be a curriculum that is also followed. You can't just say, I'm doing an independent study. So a lot of that was actually written out and, written out of, I guess, allowing though. And so advisory was able to stay because it had a curriculum. And then I would say, like, it's hard, like, it's all that PTSD, but when we hit COVID in March of 2020, we moved advisory as a class we had to see because it was already hard enough with the virtual, like, what are you gonna do for a virtual advisory? And then when we came back last year, we had the reduced schedule, and so advisory was kind of in the morning where you could come in, and we should have seen it then, that we weren't having a lot of kids coming in the morning before the 9:25 start for additional support, even though our teachers were here. So we were trying to see if we could continue that, but, you know, I, my favorite conversation I've had with a high school teacher is, who's been here a while, he's like, we've done this nine different ways, and every time it hasn't worked. So it's, it's one of those things, like, maybe this is a situation that has run its course as advisory as we know it, as a graduation requirement, but not as a student support requirement. I don't know who, I feel like I should call on you, but I know it's not my job.
Yeah, I think we should go around, so we've done this with a few times.
Okay.
So my chat, so what percent of students were actually virtual, or put it the other way, what percent of students actually were in person that changed by grade, you know, with?
So I have that data back on my computer back there, but.
Just gut feel.
Off the top, I had 18% of students actively participated in advisory. I would say of that 18%, well, that would, I would say 8% or less were actually in school.
8% or less. And so now we're taking away that virtual option, right?
Correct.
And, and so, exactly what are we gonna offer them on that first hour on Wednesdays? Wasn't very clear.
So what I, so we're saying, if advisory is not removed as a graduation requirement, advisory will happen, it might not be first hour on Wednesday. So, so one of the challenges you have with advisory is whenever you have it, that's when people leave the building. That's just the way, the nature of advisory. So we would offer advisory as it was in 2019, which was in person, before COVID. In person, you report to your teacher, you have to ask for a pass to go see another teacher if you need additional supports, if you need to go take a test, all those things. So all of that happens in that first hour, but all students will be on campus in their advisory class.
If it was kept as a graduation requirement.
Correct. If it's kept as a graduation requirement.
If it's not kept as a graduation requirement. So I'm trying to understand advisory as well. If the goal is to have support for students who need it, I'm having a hard time finding how one-size-fits-all means what students need. Whereas if you look at some of the ways it could be embedded, or having a learning strategies class, we need to have, for those students that need additional support, we need to make sure we have a curriculum in place that really supports where their needs might be. It seems like what we were using for advisory, again, in the middle of COVID, I understand, I'm not sure that really moves students forward who may struggle at math, or struggle at ELA, or struggle at science, or, you know, whatever the struggle might be, executive functioning, right? The days of the study hall and things like that, those aren't allowable? And it seems like this is almost what it's become with a few checking assignments along the way. Is that really the best support, the best use of time for students who need it?
So we're gonna take away virtual at the very least, right? We're gonna make it in person.
That's correct. So if it's kept, everyone needs to be there.
Everybody showing up at the same time.
And, and these, and everything on the top of this page, the supervision and the engagement and tardiness, that, that students, there's no doubt that students engage better when they're standing in front of a person.
Fair enough.
And it would be many lessons. So I teach advisory, as a board, you keep it as a graduation requirement. I need everyone in person. All right, today, we're gonna work on test-taking skills, so we're gonna work on that. Say advisory is 40 minutes, we're gonna do that for a half an hour, then maybe 10 minutes to go see your teacher. There's not a curriculum that is out there that says going to see your teacher is, you know, a viable, you know, curriculum to go and support students that have additional needs. Not saying it's not important, you know, it was so important, it was negotiated in the teacher contract that we really need you on campus more, right? And a lot of teachers do it already, but we needed it so that it was system-wide, right? As we've tried to move the systems and things across the schools. So yeah, it would be in person, there'd be many lessons, there'd be assessments that go along the way. It wouldn't be, okay, Ms. Seffrose, I'm here today, can I go see Ms. Southward? And then, who knows where I went? Maybe I checked in, maybe I didn't, I've gone everywhere. But we do want to make sure the students that need that support, they have it. You know, one potential way is signing up for the class as an elective if we go that direction. The other way is making sure as we regain more class time and more instruction time, that the teachers are working with the students on some of those tier-one interventions as well.
Now, we talked about access to teachers, the beginning and the end of the day. How does that equate with bus timings, right? I mean, at the end of the day, if, if students want to meet with a teacher.
The buses come before the teachers come in the morning. So as soon as they come into the building, they arrive in the building approximately 7:40. Teachers need to be here by 7:45 at the latest, so they could go right off the bus and go up and see their teacher for those 10 minutes before class. After school, the bus leaves 7 minutes after, so that would be a little bit more difficult in terms of that, but that doesn't mean, you know, you can do emails, you can do, there is a 5 million, nowadays, there are lots of different ways, but a teacher can always say, hey, I'd be happy to meet you, why don't you come, you know, before school and meet you? If you're on the bus, you can, your teacher will be there when you arrive.
My experience with the high school staff has been they're very responsive to students' requests. So like Ms. Fairman said, if an email's sent, you know, Mr. Barron, I'd like to meet with you, I have a couple of questions. And I know the students are, you know, comfortable reaching out. I, I had a middle school student reaching out to me for math questions at one of the events this year, and I'm emailing the student back and texting Ms. Schultz to get the answers to the math question because I didn't know what the middle school student was working on. Lo and behold, they thought they were emailing Mr. Watson, the middle school math teacher.
Oh, that's perfect.
But they were emailing me, so.
Right, well, yeah.
I figured she thought I was smarter than math, but anyways, I, I do understand your point, there is more accessibility, but there will be some coordination for those people, those students who take the bus.
I.
Because it's a hustle, I got to get my, you know, violin, I got to eat my Jim Claws, and I get to get on the bus because the bus leaves in seven minutes and it waits for no one.
And I think the other difference is also, when we talk about advisory, like I said, it's really hard when a student comes in without you knowing why they're coming in or what they're coming in for. If you email and say, hey, I, I have some questions on problem three, that teacher can be ready, like, it's, it's a much quicker response versus like, hang, let me get through all my papers, let me get to see what you're talking, that, that idea, and as I'm watching around, where that one-on-one support is much more directive and, and shorter, but not in the, in the wrong ways, it's a targeted, focused support. So, it doesn't take as long as what might be a 15-minute one, otherwise, because of distractions, it can go down to five.
And even in the old advisory, like the night before an Algebra II test, there would be so many students there that they weren't getting more than five minutes, if that of individual instruction, anyway.
Correct, correct. And if they take the Algebra Prep class, they want to be ready.
All right, one last question, I'm going to fasten on. But, but the, I guess, the whole idea here is to make this somewhat equitable, but I presume the students who are approaching teachers today are somewhat at the upper end of the performance.
In general, I would say, like, that, that's going to be a big generalization, but generally, students who are comfortable going to a teacher and saying, I need help, I think all of us can say, as young people, that is never a comfortable place to be. I think it's much nicer to be in the classroom and a teacher is saying, I noticed that you might need a little help on this. And then give them that support on time in the space. I, I know Howard is in the automobile industry, but the idea of on-time delivery, right? Like, if you are in the classroom, you can give on-time delivery and support with that additional time that is there. So, I, I'm going to brush, it's going to be a broad stroke, right, that I'm going to say, yes, generally, the students that went and sought support were the students that actually knew that they were in trouble. I think that's a really hard place, specifically for high school kids and younger high school kids to be, is to understand when you don't know something, right? I don't know what I don't know, and if you don't know what you don't know, how do you know how to ask for help? Generally, students who are a little bit more confident and are doing better can say, I'm having a hard time with this very high-end piece of this question, I'd like to go see my teacher. So, I would say, broad stroke, yes, generally, the students that were seeking help are those that were achieving at a higher level.
So, how is this change going to help those underperforming students?
Because they will be in the classroom where the teacher can identify that I see that you are struggling, and I'm going to help you right here, right now, versus asking the students to figure out that they were struggling and go ask for help.
But, they're already in school with teachers.
So, what I'm saying is, with the three additional hours, it gives a little bit more flexibility and a little bit less pressure unto the timing, and so you can say, and again, we're also going to go to our teachers when we come back this year and say, if, if this is passed, if this goes through, this is what we're looking for, these are our expectations, we want you to start to help those students, do, do more individual, small group, come back to class, large group, informal progress assessments with the students so they can understand where they are and where their struggle places might be. The idea of metacognition is the development that by the time you're a senior, you're pretty good at knowing what you know and what you don't know, and where you can ask for help. Oftentimes, in ninth grade, that is a very, that's a skill you have to learn how to do. So, ID teaches that, which is why it's such a nice matchup to this, which is, ID teaches you about where are you, who are you as a student, how do you best learn, you get to learn who you are as a learner in those ID classes, that is actually that curriculum, and then you also have access at that time for support during the ID hour as well. In addition, we're now going to add in the assessments three times a year to see where you are with your skill development, which doesn't always come across, like, in a science test or something, but just catch those skills as we go through. Great question. It's, it's the science and art of teaching, is what we're looking at.
Jennifer?
Okay, I got a lot here. So, I'm one of the 18%.
Yes, you, yes.
And we've been getting emails all day from the 18%. So, as their community representative, I'm just going to throw out a few things. First of all, is advisory just scheduled for juniors and seniors?
All students.
All students, okay, with the ninth and 10th graders also having ID.
Already having ID.
Okay, so, okay. So, the first thing I want to ask is, I understand the wisdom of not having advisory be a graduation requirement because of the failure issues. Is it, is it a possibility to make it a, an elective? So, I can take this, I can take this if I want to take it, because I will use the time in the 18%, and I will use the time wisely.
But there has to be a curriculum attached to it.
Right, so go to the learning strategy slide. So, it wouldn't be, okay, advisory, call the same name as an elective, you come in, so what are we doing today, Mr. Watson? Well, you can work on what you need to work on, and if you need to go get help, you can see if a teacher is available, it wouldn't be that. It'd be focused on these areas.
I think, frankly, I think this should be mandatory. I mean, all, all ninth graders have to take this at IA, so I, I, so there's a lot of moving parts here.
To be honest, some of this is actually embedded in the ID hour, but this would be for students that need additional support with it. This is, learning strategies, actually, I won't speak to that because I would say, in general, it's.
I mean, the problem with having an advisory elective is, okay, if I'm taking the elective, I'm free, but the math teacher I want help from is not free, right? So, that becomes a little bit self-defeating unless you're using the time to either do homework or take a retake test.
Correct, but then that's not curriculum.
Also, if, if you decided you needed to go and see two teachers, and you got to one teacher first, got what you needed, got to the next teacher, and you were number eight in the queue, you also may not be able to see that teacher during that time, so I guess.
That's an existing problem now, too, right? Yeah.
I guess from my understanding, you know, as you say, you're one of the 18%, what would be helpful is, what are those academic supports that were beneficial that we need to make sure for, you know, whichever person's the 18% that their son or daughter need? So, under advisory, what was the academic support? Was it meeting with the teachers that was so beneficial?
I would say for our family, that, that's what it was, yeah. But, okay, so.
That's helpful, no, thank you.
Sorry, there's so much here, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying I necessarily advocate any of these solutions, I'm just thinking outside the box. A lot of the emails we got today were, COVID is rampant, the kids are going to be missing school, advisory has been a godsend for re, for taking makeup tests without having to miss more school, or my sport, or my job, now the ninth and 10th graders have ID.
Correct.
Is, is there, if advisory went away, what could we do for juniors and seniors to take that stress? Because that, and like you said, I don't, maybe I'm not ready on Wednesday to take the test, but.
Right.
But the kids have been doing that, and they have been really, really liking it. So, is there another way to help them recoup that time?
I think this is where we get to individualize per student, because this would be a situation where we would speak with the counselors, speak with the teachers, I mean, especially if a kid is out with COVID, that's going to be impacting eight different classes, so we would want to make sure, as we have done in the past, is we identify what the pattern is and how we can help you stay on track, but also help you stay up with your assessments. One of the things that we are looking at is having a center in the high, in the, in the office itself, the CRC is currently known as the testing area, where there would be someone in there that would help you, let you take your test, move on. Yes, you may or may not be missing a class for that, depending on how that's set up. I mean, the student could come in early if they wanted, they could stay later, but I know, we would work with the student and their schedule, and also be able to say, work with the teacher, is there something that the student can miss for 20 minutes today that would be okay?
If that testing center could have, like, dedicated before and after-school open times, I think that would be really helpful.
The student would have choice about which class they could miss, so you could have a student say, you know, I, I'm really comfortable that I'm on track in this class, it's okay if I miss a class to take this test.
Feedback was, is that that's not the situation at all. The feedback was, my kid is freaking out because they've already missed two weeks of school, they don't want to have to miss Spanish to go take a math test, the day, in the few days when they come back.
Can I ask you a question directly? Yes, Sarah and I can look at what we might be able to do as far as staffing it after school, like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday after school, and then Monday, Friday morning, to see what additional options outside of that that might be available.
Yeah. Okay, so, moving on, so you talked about, like, building in dedicated advisory time during class time, maybe in an informal way, like a one-on-one.
We're calling it active support, yes.
Active support, okay, so, I, my concern is that that will, just like advisory now, will just not get taken advantage of in the right way.
By?
By, by both parties. Like, say, say the teacher's enthralled in a lesson, right, and instead of taking that 20 minutes for, you know, one-on-one time, the lesson goes on. So, I, when you first started presenting, I thought, okay, could we make it a mandatory in every class at some point during the week, that, okay, this, this is basically advisory time within the class? But then I thought, that just raises the problem of the 82% again, right? You're going to have most of the kids screwing around during that time.
Like, I want to be really clear, I don't think 82% of the kids were screwing around, I think 82% of the kids weren't taking advantage of.
Right, right.
So, there's a difference of that, right?
Just using, not, using it in a not-academic way.
And I think that, again, going back to what we were talking about before with graduation requirements, the joy of working in this district in the same way it was for the IA is 90 minutes allows for an awful lot of flexibility with instructional practices. So, we, we could, of course, say, we would like to see, you know, we could make recommendations or requirements, or however we want to present with our teachers, but having them understand that we're giving you three class periods back, we're giving you four and a half hours back, where do you see the ebb and flow of your class, where that you start to see what the pinch points are, or you might want to do a, a progress check that day and, and keep in your head, like, maybe this is, I know that coming up to the very first essay in ninth grade is where the kids really freak out. In my head, I'm taking that class period and putting it right in here, and that's going to be the day that I provide the supports to get everybody where they need to go. There's lots of different ways to envision where those three, three class periods come back into your schedule. I would say, I appreciate what you're saying, like, every week you have to do this, that's a great directive, except every class, as you know, has these different ebbs and flows, so I would say, really looking at your pinch points and being transparent and proactive with your students, saying, this is what we have seen in the past, this is what we're, we know this tends to be an area of struggle, so we're going to make sure you have this day of pause and support, so you can assess where you are and be ready for the next step. That might be one way we do it, it might be every, I, like, I hate to say on Fridays is when you do it, because Fridays are a very different vibe in high school than any other day of the week, so it maybe goes back to on Wednesdays. If you're teaching on Wednesdays, part of your class has to be instructional support addition in your room. There are lots of ways we can approach that.
It should be, it's really, it should be organic and natural.
Sure.
So, I taught for almost 20 years, and this is something you would expect to take place, really, the support you're talking about, pulling somebody up one-on-one, you know, hey, I, I just noticed, you know, you didn't do well on this test, you know, so I need five minutes I want to talk to, kind of what happened, you know, I wasn't prepared, I had a lot going on with my family, I forgot whatever it is. So, a lot of that should just take place normally in the classroom. But if we're finding, even with additional time teachers are on campus, there's inability to meet the needs of certain students, then we can look at what additional options that individual student may need outside of just meeting with the teacher.
I, I think for this to be successful, it's a great segue, I, I think it's really important that the teachers actively promote, advertise, we have this, you know, extra class minutes, we have before-school minutes, we have after-school minutes, I really, really,
I'm here for you.
I, I, I expect you, you know, to, to engage with me and, and really push it, I mean, as you know, Sarah, that's one of the reasons why the IA is so successful, because most of the kids have that extra hour after school to take and take advantage of it to get that, that help, but there's no buses, so that makes that a lot easier.
In college, you have office hours.
Essentially, yes, right.
And, but, so, so then that takes me to my final point, which somebody already brought up, which is, and office, there were office hours during online school, because there had to be. The kids who need the most help are not the kids who are ready to say, I need you to explain problem three to me in our five minutes after school, so I don't miss my bus, right? So, that, I think that's a real hamster wheel that has to be addressed.
Which is why we prefer to have that focus on the active support within the classroom itself, because I think, it's for exactly what you said, sometimes they don't know that they're struggling, and they're, and I'm going to be specific to math, there is nothing harder than having a kid go home with a misconception of math and then do 50 math problems, all wrong, right? The unlearning that has to happen, or the relearning that has to happen to undo that understanding and change it is.
And frustration.
And frustration, sure, when we could have caught that earlier within the classroom, and I'm not saying that advisory was the be-all, end-all fix of that, but I think with this idea of, as we move forward, part of SEL also is making sure that you are there and identifying and helping kids with those active supports in the classroom. That is what tier-one or tier-two supports look like, this is a way to really push that forward and push that into those rooms, not that they're not already there, most of what I put out here, teachers are doing already. It's just making that more of a embedded, I guess, and/or.
There, I think there's enough, I think, so my, my personal opinion is there's enough community concern around this issue, and I, I get everything that's been laid out here, but that we, we might want to sever these two issues and revisit the, the advisory situation. You know, maybe my colleagues feel differently, but I, I think it's really complicated.
I, I, I somewhat agree, but can I ask you to clarify that, just so I know what, I know you mean sever, but are you saying sever, just to get, right?
We approve the business course and not move on advisory today. And we have two board members who are on here.
We're only being asked to remove it as a requirement, which doesn't mean it's not an option.
What I'm hearing is that if we remove it as a requirement, we're removing it.
No, that's not what we said.
No, I'm not hearing that, that's why I wanted to clarify.
If it's, if it's, we're asking it to be removed as a graduation requirement. We are saying that if it's staying as a graduation requirement, then it is going to be in-person at school.
But, but if it's not a graduation requirement, and I, I can still sign up to take it?
Advisory?
Yeah, if I'm a student.
No, because, no.
So, it is being removed.
So, it is being removed, yeah, it's, it's either.
That's what we're trying to say, is that, in, in, in that opportunity cost on this page, which is the second half of this, we are asking, and we are recapturing those 36 hours that, that is advisory, and putting those back into the classroom with the teacher who teaches the content, who is best able to support those students at the time and at the moment, versus on a Wednesday morning, in-person, virtually, or not at all.
Before splitting it into two questions, can we at least go around?
Yeah, of course, of course, that was just the last, my last comment, go ahead.
Well, it's a good segue, because, A, that was my, one of, one of the points I was going to make, is, not, not a problem. I guess for me, it was a good segue because I actually was leaning toward making the suggestion that, I'm not sure why it's a one motion as opposed to two separate motions, only because there are a few concerns that I have with the comments about the before and after-school being part of the solution. I just know that there are some equity gaps that do exist, and if we look at 18% of the students that are using this, how do we know that 18% aren't the students that are on the bus? I, I don't, I, I don't want us to rely on 10 minutes or 15 minutes to allow a student to get from a traffic jam in the parking lot to get inside the building and make it to a question with their teacher.
I want to be clear, the 18% were the students who were either on campus or participated in the virtual activity that week. It does not mean that they were seeking help. It means that they were, like, so they could have been the bus riders who were sitting in the advisory class because they couldn't go anywhere else because they had arrived at school on time. So, when I say, so I'm looking only at attendance, I'm not looking at.
They were present.
Yeah, they were present, so, so here, when I say only 18% of the students actively participated in advisory, that means they were either here in person, in front of their teacher in person, and/or they did their assignment that was due that week, that week. It doesn't mean that they were seeking support. It just means that they were physically present.
But they could have been, like.
But they could have been, correct.
But they could have been, right, so.
But it also, but it also, that does incorporate the kids that ride the bus that have to be here.
I know, but it's a lot of gray, I think.
I agree.
And, and, and even if looking at the students of 18% consistently, but what about the other percent that were inconsistent but still may have used the service or the resource? And, and so I think that's where my concern is, not depending on that before and after time for school, for those students who may not have additional resources to gain that support. And I guess I'm also a little more leery towards the fact that we're depending on also the students' schedules to be aligned with the teacher's open time for support. So, if I need assistance during a certain timeframe, my teacher's only available at seven, or eight o'clock, I don't really know, hypothetical time, but I'm never available at that time, but I need the additional resource, now I don't have that additional support. So, are we thinking about how we're going to make sure that there is time in a student's schedule, because we don't want the students to be a, just, you know, walking around the building without a designated space.
When you're in ninth and 10th grade, you have ID hour.
We're talking about 11th and 12th graders.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
We're not assuming that 11th and 12th graders have access to vehicles, correct?
Correct, what I'm, but I want to, I want to make sure that in ninth and 10th grade, ID hour serves as a support, it's a support hour as well as a curriculum-based hour, as well as learning who you are as a student, teaching you some of those study skills. 11th and 12th grade, those students may take advisory differently, but also in 11th, 12th grade, every additional honors, every math course from Algebra II on has an extension course that is also available to them for additional support within math. That is an option they also have to take, as, as well as the learning strategies course that we talk about here. So, yes, in learning strategies, if you're taking that eighth hour and you need to see your English teacher who's teaching eighth hour, you're not able to seek their support. However, that is also a time where you can work with a teacher in your classroom and craft, this is what I'm looking for, this is where I'm struggling, can I email my teacher this request, and then that way you can see them. I think there are lots of different strategies and lots of different ways to teach students how to also help them approach teachers for help, which this learning strategies class teachers for help, which this Learning Strategies class can do, as well as the ID hours also help students do.
Okay, so going back to, I get, I get all of that, but at the same time, if I don't have a designated time of day that I know my teacher is available and I'm also available, how do I take advantage of any support?
That would be a challenge. It's the same challenge we have with advisory, right? So if five kids check in really quick and they come to see me in advisory, and you're number 12 in the queue, I may not get you that day. So I see three possible options. Option one, we simply keep it as a graduation requirement for now, but knowing that everyone's going to be required to come in person, and that will update the curriculum so that we have many lessons and things like that that cover these things. Curriculum is not allowing the students just to go and see a teacher, and I get the benefit of that. But there'll have to be many lessons that are more robust than what we've offered in the past in the middle of COVID.
But maybe they could try to squeeze that in too during that time, like, they could have their lessons and maybe try to go see a teacher.
Potentially, sure, if that teacher doesn't
This is what the problem is. When you, when you have in-person advisory, the teacher has to teach the kids in front of them.
Right, right.
They have to teach them the note-taking skills or whatever. So maybe, you know, the first 30 minutes of a 60-minute is that skill, and then the last 30 is your individual time. So then now everyone's going to see their teacher for the last 30. We can't have it be open office hours, because that's not curriculum-based instruction.
Yep.
Option number two is to remove from graduation requirement and embed some of the things we're talking about and continue to work through that. Option number three is to remove it as a graduation requirement and say, you know, Pat, we want this elective class offered to students who feel they need additional support. We understand that will require some more staffing, but then that would be a semester-long class where the students would have that support as part of their schedule, right? So the reading skills, the math skills, the test-taking skills, the study skills, all those things
The Learning Strategies.
That we know are beneficial to student's success, then would be their class. Wouldn't necessarily provide opportunity to go and see a teacher, but to ask questions.
I love number three, because those are the reasons why, like, I can only speak for my family, it was because these things weren't mastered that I needed advisory, because I'm sinking in all my classes, right? So it's time, I think it's time well spent for the students who really do take advantage of advisory help, my opinion.
And if that's the goal, then we would move to making that an elective. We could add some additional staff, and then students could sign up for that as a course if they felt they needed support. That way it's also not a one-size-thing.
It's still my turn.
All right, that's right. I just want to make sure we go around the table, that's all.
It's still my, I understand your point.
Go for it.
Finish your point, Pat.
Oh, that was it. Thank you. Just those three different options. Happy with whatever the decision is.
I get, I get, I'm not opposed to, I think if you, I'm not opposed to the graduation requirement removal, but I would love to see an inclusion of an option and not just present, we're removing this without some type of, let me finish, concrete, this is what our plan is. I know we got thoughts, right? You know, we got, you know, some things that we plan to do. Going back to the fact that this is a, our 11th and 12th graders, and if we're seeing that our 11th and 12th graders are struggling at these basic skills, having it at 11th and 12th grade is too late to me. These are things that we should be talking about in ninth and 10th grade, about, well, I'm saying reinforcing, perhaps, because if we're saying that we're replacing our advisory with study skills and note-taking, if these students haven't developed those skills at that point, we, maybe we didn't do so great of a job in ninth and 10th grade. I'm not understanding if this is the solution.
This is a course that's currently offered. So what we're saying is, within what we already offer, we can offer further, more sections of this course that's already offered into our curriculum. What you're seeing here is, yes, already in our ninth and 10th ID hours, and in fact, the personal project is where the students demonstrate, practice, demonstrate, and apply all of these into a curriculum. So that is the curriculum of 10th grade ID, is taking all of these skills and putting them into a project that is of the student's passion and interests versus
That's the NYPD.
That's NYPD Personal Project. And that's what the Personal Project is designed to do, is to take all of the approaches to teaching and learning skills and put them into a project that is the passion of the student, allowing them to practice and demonstrate basically everything we just put up there, plus some. So it is in those courses. There are times where it just takes students longer to learn and understand those things. When I see, well, you might have to say them.
So how does this, I mean, I guess, to me, I'm trying to see, how does this replace and fill the void of what parents are expressing they're losing by not having advisory?
And that's kind of where I've been, you know, looking for some feedback. Is it the loss of support? Because we know, if you go back to the one slide, Ms. Fairman, one before this. No, go forward, please, sorry. Right here. Right here, thank you. We know these are all things we can do, that we plan on doing for next year already, if it's not a required class for graduation. The next slide is something if the board feels, okay, if we're not going to have as a graduation requirement, we want to have academic support for students. And these are areas where we provide academic support. As a classroom teacher, I would then say, looking at my students I have this year, seems like note-taking, we went over Cornell notes and other styles, everyone's pretty good with that. I see more of a math need. I see more of an ELA need. I see more of test strategies or executive functioning, and then tailor for that. So I'm still looking for the feedback as far as, what is the academic support outside of having a conversation with the teacher, or being able to take a makeup test? Are people feel they're losing? That's kind of my wonder.
Yeah, I think the emails have expressed those two things. One-on-one time with teacher and makeup work, knowing that kids are going to be sick and out of school for, in perpetuity, as far as we know at this time. Yeah.
Right.
So I guess I'm not opposed to the removal of the graduation requirement. What I'm more concerned about is what we're replacing as an option, right? So I'm okay with voting for the removal of the graduation requirement because of the barriers and all of the safety concerns that have been expressed, because we don't want students in the building just, you know, frolicking.
That's exactly.
That's a, you know, good term to use, right?
So what would it be replaced with? So we would have, one more slide. This embedded student instructional support, that answers to the things that are brought up, teacher accessibility. Still not enough, not going to debate that. Opportunities for tests or retakes. Trustee Matt Lowes' question was, can we provide some after-school or before-school testing opportunities for our students for makeup? I'm sure between the team, we can problem-solve around that and find opportunities before or after school as well. And then the next slide, if the board says, you know what, for our juniors and seniors, or ninth through 12th grade students, we would like this to be an elective they can take, and then we can open up more sections, and, you know, have to add a little bit of additional staff, but these are all important skills as well, and then there'll be additional support here. While I may be the social studies teacher, you may have a question about a science project or something that you're working on, or a science experiment, still with the ability to assist in most cases and help with that. But it would have that embedded curriculum of what they need to work on, as opposed to having a study hall and things like that. And when advisory, as best I can tell, changed during COVID, when the state said, you know, this new pandemic learning rule, which basically everything goes, you know, we're not worried about 180 days, we're not worried about 1,098 hours. We are back there now, which has also taken away some of the flexibility. We know students just don't learn in 180 days, some learn 195, some learn in 82.
So I did like the, this is my second-to-last comment. I did go back one slide. I did like the suggestion about the fast bridge option.
That's an option that's happening.
We're doing these things.
We're doing all of this, the fourth one, that is going to be happening.
Oh, you said future considerations, so I'm reading it based on what's on here?
So what I
Future being this upcoming fall.
I was told to give current and future. That was the direction I was given, sorry.
That's okay.
So teacher accessibility is happening. Additionally, capture time in class, if advisory is removed, all that time goes back in, opportunities for test-taking and retakes, that will happen.
Let me, let me restate that. Let me, let me rephrase my statement. I do like the fact that if we are providing resources for that bullet point, is what I'm really trying to say.
The fourth one?
Yes. So if we're providing an outlet or a resource for students who may need additional support because of their reading or math placement, or how I'm scoring, or whatever the case may be, could help us in addressing some of our testing outcomes, right? And so the reason why I'm saying I like the number four option and taking it to the next level for 11th and 12th grade, to kind of help those students strengthen those skills in math or reading during, at the same, for instance, if I'm in a math class, we all know that you need to be able to practice a skill that you're trying to develop, right? And so to give me, to say go home and put together a schedule, but if I don't get to go and practice during that schedule, then I don't really know, because my behavior isn't changing, right? I may not, I may know how to do the action, but I haven't practiced the behavior, so it isn't something that I'm gaining, right? So if I'm a student and I'm learning how to take notes, right, and I'm taking that class at the same time that I'm building my, my reading skills, I may actually now become a better communicator, I may actually, I'm digesting information better, my thinking skills may sharpen, my responses may actually, you know, become a little bit more fluent, because I'm being able to apply that skill. So I like the fact that we could possibly work with our students that may have that area, but I also want us to be, you know, cautious that we aren't placing all these students in the same room where they're being labeled, right? So we're going to also make sure we don't get down a road where we're placing students in a position where they could be future, like, oh, you're in, I saw you come out of Ms. Jacobs' class at seven o'clock, we know what that class is for. We also don't want to go down that, that road, but still providing resources for students in this bullet number four.
So, yeah, interdisciplinary hour is mixed group. So when you're in there, when, the way, the way it's envisioned is that once we have those initial assessment done, and we can see where skills are, then, as they do with ID already, they small-group them in different ways anyway, and so they would just small-group it, and no one would know why you're small-grouped together, but that's, that would be why, and you would get that additional targeted and structured support, which we feel is, it's active support. It's the MTSS built right into the system, again, and not a passive way. But I agree, I'm very excited. That was the conversation I had with the high school today, that this is one of the big assessments that they have looked at and ways that they can do it, and make it so that it has impact in the here and now, and not just in a report that sits in front of the board.
And I know Howard really wants to ask his questions. So if you can go up
I shouldn't name my slides, sorry. Makeup color.
Number, okay, yeah. Nope, go back to the hours. Okay, so you explained this part, and I'm trying to really understand the opportunity cost. Can you elaborate a little bit more on this? I'm not really understanding.
What I'm saying is, the opportunity cost of having advisory as we have it now, is that we are taking away six full days of instruction from our students.
And how are we, how is this going to go back into the instruction? I need to understand that.
So, so instead of having a shorter period on Wednesday, every class would have, every class would always be 90 minutes regardless, unless it's a half-day. So right now, on Wednesdays, when we have this hour class, those classes are shortened, and I can't do the math off my top, I have it maybe to 70 minutes, 70 or 75 minutes.
Right.
72, to be exact, it's 72 minutes. Thank you. Thank you, two extraordinary answers.
And I know one of the things that came up was, we don't have enough time in the schedule for a teacher to answer all those questions. If we were to say, like, for instance, instead of giving, instead of offering this time back into the teaching structure, you also don't want students just sitting in the class doing nothing. But at the same time, there could be time for me to maybe say after, and, you know, do, do the test in three days instead of one day. Like, here, here's part three, if you want sheet number two, come back, come back tomorrow, do sheet number, I don't really know, I'm making this up, but
But you're right, yes.
At the end of that class time, also could be time for the students to either work on their homework or ask those questions of the teacher. So
That's what I was saying about the mandatory, like, block inside
Cause you're, you're in the class, you're together, you're engaged.
And that's exactly what we want.
Just a suggestion.
And all of those are your formative assessments, right? There's different ways of doing it. Teachers might do a cahoot, you might do an exit ticket, you might just share the assignment and say, are you here? Are you here? Are you here? Okay, if you're here, get started. If you're here, here, come up to the front of the room real quick and let's have a further conversation. That's also part of teaching, right? That's part of good instruction, having those formative assessments and using that data on the spot and making decisions moving forward. But if the board does remove it as a graduation requirement and likes the idea of having learning strategies offered for that additional support as an elective, we can move forward with that as well. And as parents reach out regarding their students wanting that additional opportunity, we would just, you know, work on adding those additional sections for those students that need it. But we will, we will circle back, and, and we will, I'll commit that we will find a way to have testing before and after school on some days, that staff. So I'll make that commitment right now, that that's a concern.
I know the love is to have the testing during school, so that there really, there's really no extra time commitment, but I get that that's
Right, but we also want to have instruction.
Also get nervous about missing class.
Right.
Right, you know, and that, that equates to the same thing for students who have extra time.
Right.
Right, that that's also, that that also becomes, do they request the extra time when it means they might be leading into the next class? So there, that is, that is not an uncommon thing, but be having tests before and after school.
And just about, we've been talking about names tonight, maybe, I, to your point of, you know, there being peer, you know, feelings around a course like this, that maybe we could just call it executive functioning or something, you know, really robust, you know?
The name already exists?
Yeah.
With the Learning Strategies, so it's already a class we offer, and so that's why.
Okay.
Now, Matt, here's my thoughts on this being an elective.
My last, this is my only last one. Okay, so my only last thing is, and I promise, Howard, I know you were being so patient, was, I'm guessing that this included teacher feedback.
Correct.
Was there any conversations or feedback from students regarding the course and, for those who did participate?
The Learning Strategies course or the advisory?
No, the advisory.
I think the, the conversation I had when I was presenting this is that this was a year-long pilot, and we got the feedback from the students by their behavior, their engagement, their tardiness, and their pass/fail rate.
Just, I mean, but, no, not that part, but was there a conversation with the students as far as whether or not this was something they, they felt was value-added? Was there any, is that what you were saying, I didn't see that part? Maybe I missed it.
No.
No. I mean, I think that it's hard for a student to say, yeah, this was value-added, when my data turns around and says, but, but nobody attended.
They voted with me.
That's what I was, I was trying to say.
The students that did participate, you know, I don't want us to forget or leave off that, that 10% that matters, that probably did participate.
They all matter. And, you know, I'm trying to see what everyone, and listen to everyone saying, if the goal is making sure we have supports, then my recommendation is, if the board would decide, and if the answer is, nope, keep it for another year, we'll talk about later, no problem, like, no worries there either. But if the goal is to have support, that we've got those four things we can do, we can also make sure we expand the elective for the students that need those additional supports. And that elective and learning strategies would be more academic, meaningful support than advisory, because I'm still trying to hear those key academic pieces outside of, I made up tests, I talked to a teacher. There's got to be more to that academically. That is not a curriculum, that is not a class. Whereas, happy to move forward and add a little bit of staff and have this additional class, which is going to cover these skills that we know are important.
I think I said it before, I would submit that if the 10%, if they were more robust in those things, they wouldn't be behind in needing the help of the free time of advisory in the first place, right? They would be a little bit more on, on top of their game. Yeah.
I'll let Howard speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, Howard, yeah.
You've been so patient. Howard, I'll ask my last question, and Howard will spring below.
Few things. The Learning Strategies, Pat is saying, is an existing class.
Correct.
Correct.
Is it a subset of DP, or is it actually a standalone program?
It's a standalone elective.
Okay. So because they are getting that same content in ninth and 10th grade in DP, right, or not?
In NYPD, yes. Well, in ID hour.
Okay, maybe I'm using the wrong term, but
Yeah, but it's okay, it's like
So are the Learning Strategies elective mostly taken by 11th to 12th graders? Because they're already getting some of that in ninth and 10th grade?
To be honest, I was thinking that in my head. I am, as we talked before, if you are in ninth and 10th grade, six of your eight classes are already dedicated, are already determined for you. So my just guess on that, I would think that the majority of the Learning Strategies students are a lot of the 12th graders. I'm not going to guarantee that, but I would say the majority of them are.
Not 100%, but so that, what Pat is saying is
A bulk, how would we say that?
So we already offer a class of Learning Strategies, it is primarily 11th and 12th graders, and if we take away advisory, then maybe more 11th 11th and 12th graders would take it, possibly. Okay. So, um, there are, you know, 82% obviously felt that this was not as value-added as they would like. So it is not my position to second guess or to micromanage the administration and the teachers and administration in terms of how to actually put together curriculum and classes. So I would go along with your recommendations to what you're putting forward here. What I would though ask is, as Jennifer said, we've gotten a lot of email, or a number of emails today when it became evident that this was on the agenda. If I am a parent who is concerned about this potential or this decision, if we make this decision this evening, who do I call tomorrow morning about my student?
You can call the high school, call your counselor or call the administration. The only problem is, is that it's tomorrow virtual Friday.
When I say Friday, or on Monday, or so.
Yeah, so call, call the.
Who should I?
Call the high school assistant principal who is in charge of your student and also email the counselors. I believe the counselors come back, can't remember the date that the counselors come back. They are not, they, they come in and out during the summer depending upon the counselor.
But the APs are there.
But the APs are there.
So therefore the APs can funnel it out. So each parent slash student has an AP that they're, that's under that.
Right, and I think what I would, I would ask with all of that is, I know that some of the feedback is, oh, this was a surprise. Well, we can't communicate something out until it's been decided by the board.
Sure.
Right, so we were kind of stuck in that communications idea.
So once, so when you communicate this, and obviously there are only a subset of people who actually saw it and saw it.
Correct, so this will be a robust communications plan. It won't be, it won't be, so going back to our whole example, it won't be a passive thing where you have to ask us what's going on with this. This will actually be active and it will be pushed out to all families, but we couldn't do that until.
But at the end of that communication.
This is who you contact.
This is who you contact.
Yep. And actually it'll be sent by each AP to their alphabet group.
Okay.
The best way to phrase it, so they know exactly who to contact.
Because I'm, along with trustee Southward, in terms of if you are in that 18%, either as a parent or the student, this is a concern.
And I think, and I like, well, I'm sorry, sorry.
And therefore want to make this not look like this is unilateral and, you know, the board made a decision and therefore it's a, it's a fait accompli. Their concerns are legitimate and we need to make sure that the proper people, that they have a proper person to talk to so that over the next four weeks, adjustments can be made if they think that they wanted to, you know, that their student needs to take the learning strategies. That can be added in if they think, in terms of the, the individual teachers they're working with, in terms of the before or after, whatever the, the individual issue is. Again, this was a one-size-fits-all solution. Now we need to customize it down for the individual student or, or parent. So therefore, over the next four weeks, it's really going to be the parent, I would imagine, that would be communicating, possibly the student. And then when we get to the day after Labor Day, if the student is concerned about not having advisory, who do they contact?
Their counselor.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And I would also say that I, the idea of if you're concerned about advisory and what you are missing with advisory, talking to your AP also allows your student to be put on to the radar because it was hard for us to figure out who was coming in, who was coming out, right? So we didn't always know who was coming in for support. Well, now that counselor, that AP would know to be able to talk to the counselor, to talk to the teacher. Like, once that line is there, you can individualize the support just like you asked.
And, and as you said, the 18% might not be this, not 100% of the 18% are really in need. Maybe they were just.
They rode the bus.
They rode the bus. So it might, could be 10% or 10%.
Correct.
We don't know.
And I think.
But the, each one of those 10, but let's say it's half, so it's 9%. Each one of those 9% are going to have their individual issues.
Sure.
That need, should be addressed.
And also the principal or the assistant principal is able to hand schedule you. So if learning strategies is the course you want and these are your, like, you can have that further conversation versus just being, I don't know how else to say, as you're done with schedule, you just put, instead of being put into the bin, there could be some, some, like, as you were talking about.
So my, my final thought that hasn't been brought up yet is, um, this is an experiment at this point. We've had this, I, I, who knows where this was 20, 30 years ago, but this has been in place in some shape or form for eight or 10 years.
As far as I know, from the, I know for sure from the move into the new building.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know if it was their privacy.
Since 2015, so about seven years. So is this something that can be done and then assessed over the fall and possibly something change come second semester? If we find that it ain't working?
Once you're in the middle of a full school year schedule, you're not making that type of change.
Okay, so if we were, so, so this is a, a, we're doing it permanently, but we would have to, if we were to make a change, it would have to be for the next school year.
Correct. And, and I'm going to ask if we can move beyond using percentages as well? Whether it's 18, 40, 50, it doesn't matter. We have students that need support, right? So we need to look at what we have available. We need to look at what other districts are doing to support their students better and find ways to meet the students where they're at, regardless if it's one student or every student.
Sure.
And also understanding students are going to have needs from semester to semester. So I may not need learning strategies for a semester. I might have a tragedy that occurs in my family and I miss a ton of school and I need additional support or something happens. We need to be a little more nimble.
Yeah.
A little more flexible. Hey, will this be the best thing ever? I, I can't tell you that. I can tell you that everyone's going to be there to better meet our students' needs, to better have things in place that support them in their learning. Outside of, we need the opportunity to take tests and we need the opportunity to meet with teachers, which are all very important things. I'm not disagreeing with that.
So I, I wasn't, obviously, I was just using percentages as were displayed. Well, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, consistent with what you're saying, is we need to individualize this, we need to make sure that we customize and make sure we take care of every, you know, every student individually as we, best we can. And that we will keep our eyes open and see how it works out over a year period of time and have some self-assessment and self-reflection and feedback and maybe talking, maybe doing a survey halfway through the year and seeing how it's working out. And if we need to be sitting here a year from now and having a discussion again, so be it.
Yeah, not so much the answer to you, but answer to Mr. Watson. He said the other districts would do it better. I don't think always that anyone ever does it better. I think everyone does it based upon what their students need. So I think that what I find is that we have teachers who are amazing teachers and for 36 hours or six full days of school, they are doing spot here, spot there, support for some students where do we not want that talent to be in front of all of our students with everyone receiving that amazing instruction?
But that's the.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that. I should have said, not said, do it better, but do it differently.
Correct, yes. There are different ways of doing this, yeah.
Right, so thank you, as always. Thank you. And it's important, you know, Ms. Fairman had the opportunity to meet with a group of superintendents that represented some of the best districts in the country over the past two years and kind of garnered things from them as well, which has been very helpful as we look at different ways and changes. And I think we can all agree, we've had a lot of changes during COVID that we've done academically to try to move things forward. Now with the consolidation of our three middle schools to two, looking at making sure we have everything set for the transition K through five, six through eight, nine through 12. This, this would be a piece of it. And if it, if it's not better, then we look at different options again. If that's not better, you look at different options again.
So I'm, to the, as a.
Could we just go around?
Oh, going around, yes. Absolutely.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Going back to Pat's question, what, what is it that people are going to miss if we take this away as a graduation requirement? And I'm in the percentage of parents, like Jennifer said, who would miss the opportunity to take a test during the school day and the opportunity to talk to teachers. Even taking a step further, the opportunity to have like a study hall, so if my, you know, my child was overloaded with activities, they could do homework and not be up till all hours of the night. But those things are already gone. Those aren't coming back. That, that was handed to us by the state. And when hearing Superintendent Watson say during COVID, everything got blurred, I think we forgot that. That, that version of, of advisory does not exist anymore. So, you know, answering those parents, and I will count myself as one of them, whether we remove it as a graduation requirement or not, it's already gone. So what, what we're removing is the requirement of a course that nobody really understood enough and students were failing. And so it's keeping them from graduating because they were in their head thinking that it was something from maybe a couple of years ago. There's curriculum attached to it, there's assessments attached to it, you have to do them or you won't graduate. So the alternative is to provide something that's more meaningful to take the place of advisory, but maybe not something everybody needs. So, you know, I appreciate the stigma involved. It reminds me a little bit of some concepts that were taught in a class that the acronym was PAGES. And I had to advocate for my student to be in that class. And there, there was a stigma with it, I guess, but my child got over it real quick because that was really a life-changing class. He needed those skills. They saved him. And I loved, when that class wasn't available anymore, I really wish there was an alternative to it, and this sounds like a more modern alternative to it. And so to the extent that, and it was a very meaningful class, everything from all of these skills to, don't forget, you know, if you have a book report, do next week, bring the book home with you. Things that I would have said to him. The other thing is, you know, the idea of there being a stigma to a class like PAGES or, I'll, I'll go back even further. My elementary school, some of my elementary school kids had IEPs. And way back in the day, there was a stigma with that. You had to avoid that at all costs. And it was so damaging to a student and to our whole paradigm of what we're supposed to be doing here. I hope and, and do believe we've moved past that because now I'm hearing of people advocating for more services with their IEPs and hallelujah for that because students should get whatever they need without a, without a stigma attached to it. I didn't read a word until third grade, not a word, not like I was slow to pick it up. I mean, like, not a word. And to me, not having the supports available and not having the classes to kind of catch you up like that, that, you know, I would have happily taken the stigma above or the class above having to struggle that way.
I think I, if you, I have two, I think the one thing that I have become so inspired by, by our students, specifically our middle school and our high school students, especially prior to COVID, but throughout COVID and, and after, is their advocacy for each other. So I think that oftentimes in this room, as I'm standing here, we are bringing the stigmas that we brought from when we were growing up into the room where every time I'm speaking with students from the high school, they're always saying, why isn't that there for that person? It's not because, they don't, they're not advocating for themselves because they're neither. They're saying, if, if a student needs something, they should have it. So I think sometimes bringing into the room, like, oh, that learning strategies class might have a stigma, that I, and I'm not saying this as a critique, but I think that's a generational piece. I'm inspired by our students and I'm inspired by young people across the world who say, if somebody needs it, they should get it. They are the ones who are advocating for mental health support. They are the ones who are advocating for, you know, do therapy, everybody should do therapy. Why are you not doing therapy? Like, it's, it's all of those things. So I think sometimes just to be really careful when we put, if we're sitting here saying that this potential class here would have a stigma on it, I would say absolutely not. We are providing students what they want, when they want it. We're doing on-time delivery. And to, and to remember that students don't always, they approach that differently. If someone needs it, they should have it. And that's, if you listen to our student council, if you listen to our student advisory board, that's what they always say, this is what students need, why don't they have it in front of them? So that's, would be one piece of feedback. I think the second piece is, and this just kind of goes to the room, with the feedback that you've received, the emails and everything else, and the emails and that has come to me, I don't have, at least in what I have seen, not one person has said, don't get rid of advisory, I love the content of it. What I'm hearing is, is don't get rid of advisory because of the one-on-one versing. So I think that's a really important piece, is that, that if this is a, a class that we are telling the state, we are teaching and is important, and it's important enough that we're giving six full days of school to it over the course of a year, and not one person has emailed us and said, I love the content of the class, it's really important to my student, that is something that we need to consider as a group. And that's what we have considered as a district, is to, the, the looking at why, why do we have an obstacle in our place for a graduation requirement when no one is saying, oh my God, I love the content of the class, that saved me? It's not the content, it's the time. We can find that time and do it better in different ways and, and in the on-time delivery system.
That's really well said, Sarah.
You done, Lisa?
Yeah.
All right, just to make sure.
It took me two hours to get to that.
It, it seems to me like if you think of students on a bell curve.
Yes.
We have students at one end of bell curve who tend to overachieve, who are taking full advantage of advisory.
Every opportunity, right.
Right? And, and they're leveraging the opportunity to meet with teachers, et cetera, and better themselves. I'm not sure taking, dropping advisory necessarily is going to help the other tail of students who are underperforming and need that help. Maybe it does, but it's not clear to me that the alternatives you're proposing is going to help the other tail.
I can tell you in a donut lead, those are not the students who are coming in for support.
Right, and, and those are not the students who come in for support. They're not the ones who speak up, their parents aren't the ones to speak up.
I meant to push back on that because we are, I had a son having severe difficulties from a high achieving history himself. Yeah, no, I, I don't want to out, you know, everything here. There, there are exceptions. There are, there are massive exceptions to what you're saying. And I've lived through that the last two years, okay? So I'm just going to push back on that a little bit.
Well, it's, it's not clear to me though, what we're proposing is going to necessarily help students who are falling through the cracks or underperforming with what you're proposing. So that's not, so I don't find it convincing yet.
Okay.
Right, so I'm just making my, a comment.
I would say the current model's not meeting that need either, as we now have students failing a class that's required for graduation.
Sorry, say that again? No, I, I agree with that, yeah.
Right, so I'm not disagreeing with you. So we're looking at where do students need support? First, we need to identify them, right? So now there's more, there's additional time in the class, you can argue it's nominal, six hours, okay, no problem. But when you look at doing fast bridge, A reading, A math, ninth and 10th grade, now three times, those are those data points where we can say, ah, we really need to work with these students. And then the teachers have that data for tier one interventions, you realize, you know what? Pat Watson needs more than I can do in the classroom. He's going to need some tier two interventions. We can get on that earlier now that we've got a diagnostic test that we're using for ninth grade and now for 10th grade as well. If you go to the elective that happy to expand if the board feels that we should expand it and offer more sections, these things aren't really being done right now under the current advisory model. These are all things that students need as far as moving them forward, they are a little behind. So this is an additional lever that we can pull that isn't under advisory. So, you know, I'm still looking to see, where's that academic piece that isn't advisory that's being removed that was providing support other than taking the test, which is important? And as I said, like, Trustee Mattel said, you know, can we find a way to provide some times after school and before school for more flexibility? And I've committed to working with Sarah and the team to make sure we do find a way to provide that. I think it was Trustee Southwood who said, can we be creative? Can we do half one day, half another day? Yes, we can be creative. So I'm having a hard time finding where the academic piece is under advisory that is making a difference for those students, other than those two things.
What is the curriculum for advisory? Is it not, it's not learning service, uh, learning strategies?
It's SEL.
Oh, it's SEL?
It's SEL, which we are moving into. Which has been moving into the classrooms anyway. I mean, there is, so this, this is a far, this learning strategies class is far more robust than what happens in advisory.
If this class is that important, why is that an elective?
Because we have it in ninth, 10th grade as ID, and that is not an elective. This is a 11th and 12th grade mostly class that is an elective. For so, students who did not excel, embed, apply.
Could have transferred in, might not have been in ninth and 10th.
All of those things, all of those things. So, so all of these things are part of the ninth and 10th grade ID curriculum. And like I said before, the way they practice it in the end is they do the MIP personal project, which embeds all of these things into that project. It involves research, it embeds writing, it embeds presentations, it embeds time management, it embeds note-taking skills. All of those things are embedded into the MIP personal project. There are students who do that extremely well. There are students who time management isn't the strongest part, and so the MIP personal project becomes a challenge for them, and it becomes crunch time, or they don't take it as seriously and not recognize that it's not so much about the product of MIP personal product, it is actually about the process. The process addresses all those things. So, much like a student who may have sat through a math class but didn't pay attention and do the work, they're going to have to repeat that math class. They might need to look at those skills a second time. I would say the same thing is, these things are all taught in ID. I don't know, I can't remember how many learning strategies sections we have, it's three, so that probably means that 600-plus students move on without having to take that class. So, yes, this is all taught and it's there, but it all depends on your level of engagement in that class and then in that strategies. But then it's there, available for you, like, oh, and you're like, oh, wait. Because the nicest part about ID is, as we develop students into becoming independent learners on their own, ninth and 10th grade ID is like, hey, by the way, your teacher sent me these five names, would you go see them, please, during ID hour because they're going to give you some additional supports? That happens during ID. When you get into 11th and 12th grade, if you're not identifying that these are your skill spaces, here's a great place for you to go do that, to help you say, this is how I can become an independent learner and be able to be successful post-graduation.
And I'm just going to say to you, if you're, if you have a child with executive functioning issues, or if you have a child that picks things up more slowly, it's nice to have the option to have this in 11th and 12th grade, to be able to have it all four years. I would have taken advantage of that, for sure.
And that's a nice thing. If you, Howard was speaking earlier about individualized instruction, learning strategies is individualized instruction because you can retake it. I mean, it's a semester-based class. You can take it four times. Every time you take it, you're going to be doing something different with it, and most often, you're bringing in your own content. So now you're practicing the content from another class with the strategies that are within that class.
So it's a little project-based learning that you're actually working on a project.
Yes, Howard, perfect. That's exactly what that is.
So what I'm saying is, one, it seems like a valuable life skill to have. Some students may do some of these better than others, right? So why wouldn't you make this part of your advisory Wednesday morning class? Just throwing that out.
That was adoption one, right?
If advisory is kept as a mandatory requirement for graduation, no problem. A lot of this would be embedded in there as well. So would still be the change of more focus on the curriculum piece, and then we will want everyone in person as well.
So, so I think what you're saying to that is...
Finish my thought. It also doesn't give the option to students because it's a one-size-fits-all, and not every student might need this additional support or want the additional support. Even if the board says, we really like this, expand it as an elective, offer more sections, we still have, we potentially could have students that are struggling, we recommend this would be a good course for their son or daughter, and they could decide, it's really not something we're interested in, which is fine, we'll work on it at home, we have other options, we're doing it differently. Still not a problem. So, kind of getting to the point where I would not mandate this. I think the less we mandate, the better it is to provide the opportunity for our parents and students to pick and choose.
And I think, sorry, Pat, let me just look over here. But I think also that in years past, when we had to switch it from being a study hall to advisory advisory, this was the content of that. Students who did not find value in it, this, this is high school. They let you know that they don't value it. And so that, that's part of why then, okay, maybe we can go, like, that would, like, when, as I said, one of our veteran teachers is like, we tried this nine different ways, and nine different ways it didn't work. We've tried to figure out all these different ways. It is, it is a one-size-fit-all model in terms of the curriculum. What we're hearing you say is, we're looking for those student supports, and we want to make sure that our student will get supported, will have access to teachers and all those things. That is separate from the curriculum of advisory. So that is, I think that that's the challenge of the whole conversation, is the curriculum that is required for advisory for the counter's instructional time is not what people are concerned about missing. They're concerned about missing access and support.
All right, just, are you finished?
Yep.
Okay, just a quick comment, I said it before. I'm not, I'm not comfortable removing officially advisory as a requirement tonight until we are ready to really communicate with the community the robust, I think we're all on the same page. I think, I think the possibilities are exciting, and we have good brainstorming session here, but I don't think we should vote on changing it until we're ready to lay out for the community exactly what the alternatives are going to be. Because if an email goes out tomorrow saying, no more advisory, that's just not constructive because no one's going to watch the two and a half hours of this tape tonight to listen to this discussion.
Then we won't be able to do it before the school year starts.
Well, I, wait.
This is for 2022.
Yeah, this is for...
This is for 2022.
I, I think...
My point is, my question is, if we don't do it tonight, when is the drop-dead time in terms of making this for 2022?
My heart palpitations as that conversation is going on right now because they're trying to load the loader right now and put all the scheduling in.
Correct. They've already set, they've already set the schedules back four or five months ago.
We would, if it's kept, so if the decision is, we'd like more conversation, no problem. We'll keep advisory as a graduation requirement, at least for this year.
That's what I was saying.
And then later on, we'll communicate that advisory, we're going to need everyone to please come in person, and then here's how we're going to kind of revise the curriculum as far as what is it being quote-unquote replaced with. These four bullet points, these are all things that would happen. Number one's going to happen, teacher accessibility, regardless of any actions taken tonight. And the bottom one, interdisciplinary hour, is going to happen regardless of any action that's taken tonight. And then, I guess the big piece for me to know would be, if it was removed as a graduation requirement, if you like the idea of adding additional sections of learning strategies for those parents and students who might be interested, and it seems like that's something the majority of the board kind of seems interested in.
So what I'm just trying to address Jennifer's issue, if we don't make the decision tonight, we basically are making a decision that it is going to be a requirement for 2022, 23.
Right. And no problem with that, that's a decision, no problem.
No, but that, a decision, a no decision tonight is a decision that we keep it in place.
Well, that's unfortunate because we don't want to see this broken model perpetuated for another year. And that's what I worry about, Jennifer, is that people who are advocating for advisory don't, because of the pandemic and because it's been a muddied line, and we saw last year how many students were failing to meet that graduation requirement, that parents might be advocating for something that they don't really know what it is. And when they see what advisory looks like in this upcoming school year, they're not, they're going to think it's changed, or they're going to think that something punitive has happened. Because the advisory that they want sounds like the advisory I want, and it's not that, it's not this, it's not what they're going to have.
Jennifer made two points. One is to make the, you know, to split the decision, which I think we really can't do unless we actually are going to say we're going to leave advisory for a year as a requirement. And the second thing is, you know, what are the alternatives? Well, I think you've got the alternatives all laid out here, and these kind of things, or maybe even tweaked a little bit with the study, what are the, study strategies and things like that. Those could be, you know, tweaked tomorrow morning very easily and put into the lab.
I think it's really important that a very robust communication go out, even if that's a, even if, even if that's to wait a week or two to go out so that people really know, okay, well, if I'm losing this, I'm getting that, yeah.
What percentage, and I had mentioned to Howard, the concern is, we can't communicate something that hasn't been decided. So, so I understand where the feedback was coming, like, oh, this is not transparent, all these things. I can't say we're getting rid of advisory until the board says we're getting rid of advisory.
Do you have a draft already?
This is a big part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's prettier.
Take this and cut and paste into an email.
It's much prettier in the other document, but, but also it has FAQs. So what if this, who do I contact, is this? All of those things are already embedded, which we worked on with the high school administration today.
So, my question, my issue again is not necessarily with the fact that you're requesting for the graduation removal. It's what, what's really going to be in place once it's removed? And I think that's really what parents really want to hear, going back to Jennifer's point, is I don't think, at least to me, I'm not uncomfortable voting on the removal of the graduation requirement. What I'm uncomfortable with is, right now, presenting what we have without some type of resolve for the parents, is really what my, where my concern is.
I guess I would ask, would we...
It would be those four bullet points that are here.
And this.
And then, the feedback I feel I'm receiving is, is a good idea to expand learning strategies, to expand the sections that are offered.
Yeah, but I, I think the questions that they were asking, that's not what's here, right? And so I think, I think the questions in the emails were a little different. And another piece too is, right now, we're talking about the students that were on one end of the spectrum as far as the need for additional support, but what about the students that were probably like, I'm an A++ student, right? So I think we also, as we're thinking about...
I had one who needed the additional support, so they're not mutually exclusive. You can have an A+ student, or Jennifer had one who needed that.
Well, no, 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 I'm saying, the A++ student who may have not used the resource because they didn't need the resource, right? Or the student who was...
Not the one-size-fits-all.
Right, so not looking at it as, this is a one, one-size-fit-all solution, and not looking at all the students. Are you kind of following me, or you look like you're not really?
I think so, for that student who doesn't need the support, it's no longer...
Because we don't know if that 18%, I mean, you want me to use numbers, but the students who showed up, right? We don't know if those are students who's like, hey, I'm good, but I'm still going to come because it's a requirement for me to be here, right?
Correct. They no longer would need to come, they would have the option of taking learning strategies.
Right. But I might not need learning strategies.
Then you don't take it.
But I still might need to be able to have a resource or an outlet because perhaps maybe that downtime, which is something I needed to come in and sit and do. I mean, the mental health was also some of the concerns that was expressed on one of the parents. I might just need to sit here and do nothing.
Right, that's not the way the curriculum is supposed to work.
High schools are crafted for that need. Nothing, nothing, let me remove that statement. Nothing but learn from my peers and interact with my peers, that to me sometimes isn't doing anything, but is doing something, right? So that, 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 that time where I'm not having to really use all of my brain molecules, but I'm able to use some of them, right? And that interaction with my peers, answering questions, or just that direct engagement is still something. So I don't want to say doing nothing.
Right.
But it's not really doing work.
Right, but unfortunately, in terms of the state of Michigan, that is not considering instructional hours that we have to count on our state.
Well, it was, it was meeting the needs according to what we were doing, so I'm trying to understand.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is advisory was, but that wasn't...
It was being, it was, it was meeting a need, so we can't, we can't say it was.
I'm not, I'm not saying it wasn't meeting a need, but I'm saying advisory as a curriculum didn't, that's the, that's the challenge we're running into, is we're having a conversation between, yes, I agree with everything, I wish that we could have more built-in time where students could just converse, we could have a study hall, we could have all those things. Unfortunately, I, my job is to stay here and say...
I don't necessarily want a study hall, that's not really what I'm advocating for.
No, I know, what I'm, what you're asking for, opportunities for students just to engage each other just as students, not as peers in a group project, not as anything else, just...
With, with structure. So I'm not asking for the absence of structure. I'm asking for the presence of structure, but where it's not, where I feel like it's taxing on my mind, where I actually get to still learn something through that interaction and engagement with my peers, but I don't have to walk out with another homework assignment where now I'm stressed out about work I've got to do, where I can take the skill that I've learned and now apply it to a situation where now I know how to deal with maybe a confront, where a person may confront me, and now I know how to deal with a confrontation, right? Some of those natural skills that we no longer...
That's the social, financial...
That's what the social, emotional learning was, interpersonal relations.
We're teaching our students how, going back to your point, how to balance a checkbook, but we also need to remember that maybe there's other skills that we can tap into that our students can also, citizenship is something that we've talked about endlessly, right? So I'm just saying, like, I'm not telling you what to do as far as adding a curriculum, but I'm just saying, being creative.
But what I hear what you're saying is that, though you would love to have advisory come back, but for all of the things that you just asked for, that is in-person.
I'm not asking, oh, I want it to be in-person. I want you to come, I want you to be seated in the chair.
Sure, but I just want to, I just want to make sure, like, that, that's part of the challenge, right? Is like, there are, there are lots of layers to this advisory conversation. I agree with everything that you're saying, but for that to happen, that means advisory has to be in-person because you can't engage with other students if half of them are virtual and not engaged at all.
Advisory needs to be in-person. I'm not disagreeing with that.
I'm sorry, I'm taking a turn here, but I think this communication to the community has to really stress the ways in which one-on-one help is available and emphasized. And, and, I forgot the second part, anyway.
I think...
Oh, oh, and that if you could be flexible enough, since we have to make this decision now to impact the school year, if we could be flexible enough to say, if you want to take the learning strategies class, contact your counselor or AP, so that we can really give these people the 18% flexibility. Yeah, and I think we also have to remember that last year, when students were in school full-time, in person, it didn't work. Advisory didn't work. When given a choice, they didn't go. And even way back when, it was always at the end of the day, they left early. They weren't doing the things that Michelle's talking about. I wish they would. I wish there was an opportunity for them to have that. That was never advisory. Advisory, if only 18% are showing up, and of those 18, I don't know how many juniors and seniors take the bus, it's probably pretty close to 18% is probably my guess. I don't know how many of them are there because they're looking for or need those things. Advisory wasn't ever meeting those needs once the state changed the curriculum on us.
And I, wow, I had a really good point, and I will remember it in a moment.
Welcome to the middle of the show, right?
It's brilliant.
Wait, guys, poor Sarah's been sitting here for like two hours.
It's really tough to, you know, and like you said, Pat, everyone's different.
It's a great conversation. Listen, if I could change the world...
And like you said, he needed it in one month, and then not so much the next month.
And I believe everything you're saying, I believe that we need to have, I would love for that to come back.
Guys, what a conversation.
Sorry.
It would be a semester commitment for the students.
Howard, do you want to say something?
No.
All right, there seems to be multiple, many pieces to this.
I think we need to call the question.
Right? So, is there agreement that, you know, this session needs to be in-person? I think everybody's in agreement that we're going to remove, we support administration recommendation to remove virtual option.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a given. Then the question, the second question is, are we ready to, if we want to drop advisory as a requirement, what the, what would the alternative be, right? And that's your question.
Well, I think, I think, right, like, I said, I would rather not vote on it, but if we have to, because we're at a drop-dead date, I would want your assurances and the administration that all the options we've brainstormed on are going to be there for the students in September.
Point of parliamentary procedure, Mr. President. Just so everyone knows, we only, we have five people here today. In order for something to pass, we have to have, still have to have four votes.
That's right.
So even though we have five, three won't make it, we would have to have four.
Yep.
Sorry, just to your communications point, I just put the slide back up here because this is kind of like the kind of things I'm looking at, is like, some, not only descriptions and all those things, but also scenarios, that you would ask, have them contact their AP, I would be even more proactive, and I would have the link right there for them to sign up for it on that spot.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
So I think, I think one of the big things that we have learned over the years is that the more that you can put in front, so it isn't, there's no obstacle for them to get into the class, like you want this, click this link, boom, it goes right to, it'll go right to the AP, all of that will be set up. That takes just a half a second of time.
And they'll have to meet to reschedule, because it's a reschedule at this point because schedules are in, so they would have to like set up a little meeting or something.
I had a good time, they loaded today, spent a good time at the high school today. So they loaded today the first round and then, which is again fascinating if you ever want to see a whole logic puzzle.
That's what David says. He's like, you gotta see this.
You gotta see it, it's crazy.
It's like the moon landing or something, yeah.
And all of a sudden, you're like, where did all of those students go? You got to go find them again. So the loading has begun, you know, that is a process that you go through a couple times because there's, sometimes there's a glitch in the system or whatever. So that is currently happening. So for us to be, so that's why we were saying, if people, if we want to do the learning strategies class, expand that to more opportunities, we need to do that now so we can build that into the schedule so we can get the teachers, everything.
Do you have to talk to the students in terms of whether they want it? And when do you need, when's that date?
So what we'll do is, in the robust communication, it will go to everybody that's in our email, so parents and students. And in that will be a link, hey, if this is a class that sounds like something you want to consider, click it here. So, because Jennifer had said, make sure...
And they would maybe get to like the first week of August or something like that, make a decision?
Well, next week is the first week of August. That's what's terrifying.
It would have to be quick.
It would have to be quick. So what I'm saying is, but I, what I, I guess I was more back to Jennifer's point is that we would work really hard to make it as easy as possible to get into those situations versus contact your AP, which then becomes an email or a phone call and then things get all confused.
And I'm on vacation.
Yeah, 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 all that, so we just said...
I think it's also important, though, if we do move in this direction, for this class, it is a one semester commitment. It wouldn't be, okay, I've tried it, it's October 25th, nah, I don't really want to be in it, right? So there's not going to be a lot of that flexibility. If you sign up, you got to stay in for the semester, there won't be a lot of wiggle room or other options that might be open.
And, I mean, we sort of glossed over it before, but it would be nice if in this 90-minute class, there could be a block of, you know, do you need to email your teacher now? Do you, can you connect with this other teacher now?
I mean, it's a class that practices the skills that we teach.
Yes.
So if executive functioning is a skill that we're teaching, then you practice it by emailing your teacher.
By doing that, yeah.
Yeah, and I think... And it's a fascinating class.
To Siva's point, to organize us around what we're deciding, what we're deciding tonight is only the elimination of a graduate, a graduation requirement that was becoming overly burdensome. It doesn't prevent us from still having an advisory called advisory, if that's what we direct. It's only eliminating a graduation requirement.
Understood, yep.
That's what our vote is, but it does remove it ultimately. But I guess my, to my point is, when we sent out our communication, and I think Howard, and I apologize, Howard, if I missed calling you, you say to this earlier, is making sure we have an avenue for parents to connect, right? And so for those parents who have reached out or other parents who may now have questions, having a valid channel for them to connect with will be important.
So when the communication goes out, it'll go out by the AP? So each of the APs will send it out through their alphabet groups, so that way you just respond back to the email because it goes back to the AP. It's the easiest way to do it versus trying to remember David Reed Norwalk's email and the hubbing.
However you want to do it, works, works well for them, but just making sure that that's an option because parents wanted to be included.
The idea is, we're showing, we're showing empathy, we're showing this is not, you know, on high, we made this decision, tough luck, but it's sort of, yes, we heard you, we got some emails, there are some concerns, here's how you should, you can address those individually with us. That's the idea. It's not, so it's not the my way, the highway type of thing.
Oh, I agree. And I just wanted to say, from my situation where I'm standing, I don't, I haven't seen any of those emails, so I'm anticipating what those emails said.
Mr. Watson can certainly...
Well, sure, I mean, some of the, I haven't seen all of them, so I know when you're saying this is what I'm seeing, I'm making my best guess as to what you're seeing. So if I haven't answered that and there's something additional, shoot it my way right away and then I can include that in the communication.
Rebecca has them all.
No, I think we highlighted pretty much.
It was extra help, make up tests, that my kid, I like that my kid can sleep in. I mean, that was basically the tenor of, am I missing anything?
But I think what we're doing is creating more options.
Right, so we, we are a culture of yes and not a culture of no.
I mean, we're not taking something away, we're providing more options.
Making it better.
Even when Pat said, we'll try and find before and after school times to make up tests easier, but there is an equity issue with students that don't have transportation, so we're providing another avenue. We're not eliminating the time during the day that they can also do that. We're giving them choices, not, and I always think that that's better, giving more options and more choices rather than not. So we're taking away a burdensome graduation requirement that was keeping students from graduating unintentionally, and we're adding things. We're only taking the requirement away. We're not taking the class away necessarily. We may be revamping it, but it's not gone.
And I'm hoping that Lawrence throughout the semester, you know, sees and tweaks if things aren't quite working out. You can't change the whole structure, as you said, for a year. But if hours need to be added, you know, beginning and end related to bus schedule, go with the flow.
We tweak what we can that allows us within the instructional hours component. So the joy that was COVID, there's very little joy. But because there were no rules and no parameters, we were able to tweak on the fly every single time. And I think we kind of forgot that that was because we were given grace by the state. We are no longer given grace, we have to submit a schedule to them. And if you tweak that schedule, we run into instructional hours and all those types of things. So I just want you to like, yes, we can tweak within that school framework, but let's figure that out. My brilliant thought came in, went one more time.
Oh, so I'll just make my mini advertisement again. I said it before, but for the teachers, you know, first day of school, to really plug actively all the ways they are available, because we've said that there's, you know, there's youthful immaturity, I don't want to reach out issues, and there's also I don't know what I don't know issues. So, so make it really easy for the kids to do what the 10-ish percent did during advisory and get that help.
And doesn't the BIT fit into this somewhere where if, you know, if the...
Yes, the building instructional team, yes.
Building instruction team sees that Jane or Johnny or Billy are having some issues, can start doing MTSS level two.
And the additional data that we're getting from the ID hours for ninth and 10th graders will be extremely helpful for that.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to call...
I think part of the struggle also has been, we want to focus on building those relationships.
Yeah.
And that's been difficult to do when we said, you've got to be six feet apart, now three feet apart, now wear a mask, don't work in groups. A lot of that socialization piece is missing. And it's not just with students, we're seeing in our adult communities as well. As, as a nation, we're struggling to interact with each other in appropriate and meaningful positive ways, and I'll leave it at that. So I have all the confidence in the world that, you know, the high school staff is ready to go for the year, they'll be looking to build relationships. Relationships make such a difference. I don't need to show the research or data on that, we already know that, right? And work from that moving forward. And there's going to be some bumps on the road. Not going to pretend there's not going to be. When they come up, we need to discuss it and then figure out what are the next steps to move forward. But at this point, my recommendation is, we run the experiment and we continue to make progress. And we're going to find some students where what we're proposing is just not meeting their needs. This is just not working for my student. Then that's an additional conversation with that parent. What are the needs of your child that aren't being met? I need A, B, and C. Okay, well, how can we accommodate that? What can we do differently for your child to meet that need? And that's part of the conversation piece. We're all parents. I'm a parent of three. All my kids need a totally different thing.
The child can advocate for themselves too, these are ninth through 12th graders.
And a lot of them do, right?
Well, some, yeah.
Exactly.
So I don't want to sell you this panacea, like it's going to be the greatest thing that's ever happened. I'm not saying that.
Yeah, it's just really important we advertise all of these tools and strategies at our disposal.
And we will include learning strategies as an option and allow the opportunity for them to have a conversation with the building administrator about, is this a good fit for my child? Well, what if I feel it is? Then sign up and understand, we need a semester commitment, no different than we asked for most of our other classes as well. And then we kind of move forward. And then maybe the board says, hey, in December, can you give an update? Can we hear from the building administrators, how it's going?
And to explain that teacher outreach is one of the goals of the course as well, like...
Of course.
I remember my brilliant thought.
Yeah.
I'm so proud of myself. So one of the things that you have mentioned, has been mentioned at the table, is also this idea of coming in to take a test. I think one of the things that is moving forward as a district, moving forward post-COVID, moving forward post-things, is that we have alternative assessments that can be done that don't have to be sitting down with a pen and paper in a testing situation. So we are becoming better and better and better at that. The current high school staff is going through grading for equity and will be going into that into the years. And that also is part of the idea, is like, is there different ways to capture knowledge and your understanding versus pen and paper test? There are students, I am one, I adore a pen and paper test. That is my comfort zone, that is what I'm good at, I love that. You ask me to act out a scene, I will be sick that day. So I think that there are a lot of different opportunities. So I want to say this to the camera, to whoever, I know this is three hours in and nobody's watching, but the idea that assessment has to be taken in a test room to show that your knowledge, we are, we're beyond that. And there are many different ways that we can find differentiation. If your kid is out for two weeks, we will find a way for your kid to show us what they know without having to add additional, too much more additional stress to that.
Sarah, that was brilliant, thank you for remembering that.
It was brilliant.
I was like, I'm so proud of myself. I mean, no way, follow me, I remembered, I remember.
I'd like to call the question so we can move. Can I say one thing too? I hope in that toolbox that we have of flexibility, that we don't totally close off to some of the lessons we learned of COVID that weren't, that weren't all doom and gloom. In other words, I mean, there's an administrative law study came back to us that 80 participation from, in the court process, increased 80 something percent with use of virtual and remote options.[1630.51]